Very good. Okay, this is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice, this meeting has been given pursuant to provisions of the Urban Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice, the schedule was sent to and published in the Hasbury Park Press, was also sent to the Two River Times and the Star Ledger. That notice is also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall, and as remaining continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public, and is on file in the office of the Borough Court. A copy of the notice is also being sent to such members of the public, as they've requested such information in accordance with the statute. Notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words to the applicants, their experts in the audience, about the role and authority of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. The board is a separate and independent municipal legal entity, and its limited authority is specifically set forth in the Borough Ordinances and the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. It's quasi-judicial in nature, and the members of the board are unpaid volunteers appointed by the mayor and council. The zoning board does not enact the borough land use laws and regulations, the Borough Council does that. The zoning board does not enforce the land use laws of the borough of Fairhaven. This is their responsibility of the Borough Code Enforcement Officer. This board deals with appeals for relief from the requirements of the borough's land use laws, or denials by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and the Fairhaven Ordinances, by satisfying certain required standards of proof. The board has no authority to waive these requirements. Burden of proof is always upon the applicant to show that he or she is entitled to the specific relief requested. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes of the ordinance, and that the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment to his own plan. Variants is related to the future use of land and are not intended or authorized to remedy temporary or unique personal situations. Roll call please, Sandy.
Mr. Nick Chesney. Mrs. Quigley.
Yeah.
Mr. Ridgeway. I see you. Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Ledman.
Here.
Dr. Lauffer.
Here.
Mr. Kinsella.
Here.
Mr. Shavetti.
Here.
Mr. Leader.
Here. If you'd all please join me in the flag. I pledge allegiance
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, we get a little cross noise, so if you can all just mute, that would be great. We're gonna start with the Sullivan matter tonight. If you are here on the Sullivan matter, if you could please use the raise your hand feature, so our super moderator Joe can grab you and bring you forward.
Sandy, you can hear me?
We can, John. Somehow we got two Kathy Sollivans, I don't know how that happened.
Because I'm in my car going to soccer practice.
Ah, who's the other one?
That's Dennis.
Oh, okay, fantastic. He might want to rename himself to Dennis, if you can do that.
Or can we, can we open up, turn on his video, so we can see him?
We can do that as well. Thank you, Dennis.
While we're setting up, Mr. Chairman, the record should reflect that this matter was carried from an earlier meeting of the board without the necessity of renotice. And I'm gonna swear in Ms. Gable, our professional planner, if you'd raise your right hand. You do swear in testimony to give the board of your truth, told truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So, Ms. Gable's been sworn. As the chairman, just, we'll let Ms. Krimko put her appearance on the record, but I note that there was, I believe, some completeness items, and then I assume we're gonna wanna at least offer from Ms. Krimko on the issue of race judicata, and then determine how the board's gonna proceed.
Correct, and good evening, Mr. Chair, Jennifer Krimko, on behalf of the applicant. Before I get started, I do not see my architect, Anthony Condorius, yet, so Joe, if you could let him in.
Didn't see his hand.
Now I see him. With, with regard to the completeness items, um, it was, as shown in the HGA memo, it was just with regard to the Monmouth County Planning Board, Freehold Soil, and the Monmouth County Health, and I believe that your planner takes no exception, because they are all inapplicable to the application that we are seeking this evening.
So, does the board have any questions with regard to completeness? Or is it otherwise inclined to grant the completeness waiver, so we can proceed on to the issue of race judicata, and then presumably to the merits, we get that for?
There were two additional completeness items as well, under the application guidelines. The one was the letter from the zoning officer, and the one after that was the statement of legal basis. For the zoning officer letter, the applicant did not apply to the zoning officer, and instead applied to the zoning board directly, so there is no zoning officer letter. And then the statement of the legal basis, the applicant said in their application that they will establish the proofs for the variance relief through testimony.
Yeah, we should, we should also indicate for the record that the municipal land use law does not require an applicant to apply to the zoning officer for zoning denial. They have the right to apply right to the board if they wish to do so.
No issues with any of those items, Ms. Krimko?
Thank you very much. So, to, to start with the issue of race judicata, it's my understanding, before I was involved in this application, this applicant came before the board and received a floor area ratio variance and some setback variances for a different addition than what we're proposing today.
This I don't think there was a floor area ratio variance, I think there was
I'm sorry, I called the floor ratio, I'm sorry, I meant to say maximum habitable square footage. I apologize, all the different towns call it different things, I apologize. And, um, the, this board approved that application, and a neighbor objected and filed an appeal, and the courts reversed that approval. And we are back now before you with a variance related to maximum habitable square footage, but the application is very different in a number of ways, and if I could just take a moment to go through some of that, so as, I'm sure your board, your board attorney has advised in the past, the doctrine of race judicata will only apply if the second application is substantially similar to the first. The same parties are involved. There's no substantial change in the application itself, or the conditions surrounding the property. There must have been an adjudication on the merits on the first case, and both applications involve the same cause of action. Well, it's the same property, obviously. Cause of action is we're seeking variance relief, so that's the same, but it's the applicant's position that the second application is substantially different, and there are substantial changes in the application itself. But before I go into what those changes are, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on race judicata, and how the applicant's position is it would apply here. So first, the, our appellate division has held that a claim of race judicata should rarely, if ever, be treated in a summary fashion by the municipal board. And that was in Allied Realty versus Upper Saddle River, NJ Super 407. And I'm going to quote directly from that case, "We do not suggest that a prior board action can never have a preclusive effect upon a subsequent application. Nevertheless, the rule should not be mechanist, mechanist, easy for you to say, mechanistically applied in a vacuum. Such a sterile approach would defeat the liberal review powers of the board. Rather, the circumstances surrounding the use and situation of the property should be accorded a proper opportunity to show the reasons why the prior municipal action should not be considered preclusive." And that's exactly what you're doing here now, is you're, you're using your liberal powers to consider what the differences are. And the question for the municipal agency on the second application is, is there a sufficient change in the application or the condition surrounding the property to warrant the entertainment of the matter again? And what's most important is that our Supreme Court, as early as 1959, held that this requirement must be liberally construed in favor of the applicant to be in accord with the purpose of municipal boards to provide the necessary flexibility with the zoning ordinance. And that's Russell versus Tena Fly, 31 New Jersey, 58. So, well, it is within the board's discretion to reject an application based on race judicata. That can only be done if it's found that the applicant, that the applications are sufficiently similar to the one that was prior. And in quoting the 1959 Supreme Court in Russell, our state Supreme Court 34 years later reiterated that when reviewing a board's decision as to race judicata, the court should not preclude the board from considering the second application for variance if the changes that are presented are sufficient, and that's Bressman versus Gash, 131 New Jersey, 517. So, in the Gash case, which, as I said before, was a New Jersey Supreme Court case, there was a lot line adjustment and the addition of landscape screening that was sufficient in that case to overcome race judicata. It's the applicant's position that the changes that were present, that we intend to present before you tonight are far greater and more substantive than those in which our courts have found sufficient. In the first application, they were proposing a two-story addition. Since the court overturned it, a smaller one-story addition had been constructed on the house, and now, instead of a larger two-story addition, we're only seeking a smaller second-floor addition, which, as you're going to hear, is smaller than the one that was previously approved. In the first application, there was a second-floor balcony proposed. In this application, there is no balcony. The first application proposed a second-floor addition of 543 square feet. We are now only proposing an addition of 390 square feet. So where in the first application, there was a proposed increase of 83% of the size of the second floor, we are now only proposing to increase the second floor by 55%. What I think is, is the most key is that in going through the process of submitting this application to the board and looking at the differences to ensure that we did overcome a claim of race judicata, the architect of record for this application found that the plans and the testimony relied on by the board in the first case were riddled with errors. The plans that the board granted an approval for, I'm sorry, the, the resolution, which the board granted by way of approval, was not consistent with the actual plans that were approved. So, if the house were constructed 100% pursuant to the plans that this board approved, the actual habitable square footage that would have been permitted was 2,522 square feet, not the 2,376 square feet that were noted in the resolution. So it was important to note that the, the plans that you approved actually reflected a 2,522-square-foot house, and the architect at that time had make, had made mistakes and calculations, and represent, misrepresented it, albeit not purposefully, as something smaller than it was. Um, the house we are proposing today is 194 square feet, smaller than the approved house, or about 8%.
No, no, let's be clear, we, we didn't approve 2,500 square foot, we approved 2,376 square feet.
So, I recognize what you approved, but based on your approval and the plan to approve, had it been constructed, it would have been a comedy of errors, and the house that was constructed would have been 2,500 square feet, because it would have followed those plans.
It should not have been built, because if it went to the building department, and they did the calculation, and it came out to 2,500 square foot, they would have said, you're exceeding what was approved, so we should just be clear. The resolution approved 2376 square foot, that's the approval.
Okay, understood, and, and it's the applicant's position that the plans that were presented to the board showed a 2,500-square-foot house.
The applicant testified, they, they put on this application pro se in 2007, and they attested to all the data that was given to the board, and the data that was given was incorporated into the resolution.
Understood, and, and again, it's the applicant's position, it was a mistake on behalf of the architect, in that particular case.
Fantastic, so it gives us reason to question all architects, including Mr. Condorius tonight. But beyond the odd, beyond the odd discovery that you have, that it was all wrong, what is the point of that? What is the point in raising that the approved plans were greater than what was represented to the board?
The point in raising that is just that there was a comedy of errors that brought us to where we are today, and I'm pointing out that the plans that you looked at showed greater square footage, that's all. Not that they, not that you approved greater square footage, that that's what it showed, that's all. And
I, I assume you mean that if someone actually put a tape measure on it and built it, it would be larger than what was approved, but I'm also gonna assume that the plans referenced 2,376 square feet, because that's what the board approved in the resolution.
Correct.
And we should also just be clear too, and I know Ms. Krimko, you didn't have the benefit of, of being involved on the prior application, but the court actually affirmed the setbacks. They reversed the habitable floor, Judge Lawson affirmed the setbacks, I think it was 7.6 feet or 7.1 feet, whatever it was in the resolution. So he reversed us on the habitable floor area, but he affirmed the setback. Just, again, just so we're clear, if anybody remembers the record.
Right, and, and in the first application, though, there was that side yard setback, but we're actually not seeking, we're seeking the front yard setback, but there was a side yard setback as well, so that too makes it different. Um, in the first application, the house was increasing in size by 65% in the size of the house overall. In the current application, we're only increasing the house by 20% over what's existing there today. So I think when you look at all, if you look at any of these individual issues, the fact that we're building a smaller addition, that it's a one-story instead of a two-story, that there's no balcony, and that the actual percentage increase in the house size or the massing is dramatically less than what was previously approved, I certainly think I'm sorry?
It's apples and oranges, the amount that you're requesting, because half of it's been built.
Well, not half, but Mr. Shavetti, as I'd indicated in the beginning, and should we be allowed to go forward, we could show you that what was built, even by way of the first floor, was smaller than what you had previously
You're giving us, you're telling us that you, that they previously requested a 65% increase in the size of the habitable square footage of the house in the previous application, and that they're only requesting 25% now, but the house now is bigger than it was at the previous, so what percentage above the house that existed at that time to compare it to the, to the 65% that was requested the first time around? Because that would, that would be apples and apples, that's, that's where you lost me there.
Okay, understood, and I can, I can certainly do that math for you, so what we were seeking, what was sought the first time around, by way of, um...
It's 48 square feet.
Well, that's, I'm looking for the number, so we're now seeking a home of 2328, where what was previously approved was, and I'm gonna trust your number.
2376.
Want to double check it. Yep, 2376.
Ms. Krimko, was the first floor addition built without the need to apply for any variances?
Yes, it was, Mrs. Quigley.
That's not true, that's not true, the first floor was built in reliance on the variance that was granted.
No, those, that variance, as I understood it, was, um...
Encroached, they encroached on the second front yard. They were knocked down only on square footage. They utilized the variance that was granted to the setback, and they constructed the first floor addition in conformity with the resolution granted by the board, except to the extent it was overturned by the court.
So, okay, then I stand corrected, Mr. Chair.
The second floor wasn't built because that was the only part of the proposed project that went over on the permitted square footage?
Right, but also, it was a different floor plan that was built than what this board approved, as far as the first floor, and it, they took advantage of the variance that was granted for the setback, but they actually shrunk the addition that was built.
Fine, thank you.
Not just by the second floor, on the first floor as well.
Ms. Krimko, so, so we will, we will poll the board with regard to what the board wants to do with regard to race judicata, but I would like to speak specifically about the decision of the court. I've been on this board an awful long time, and we've only been appealed twice, and this is the only time we ever lost. And I have read this, this court's decision, and I'm sure you have as well, and what I'm struggling with, with regard to what you're presenting tonight, is that first of all, this board approved apparently a considerably larger house than your clients even wanted, but they approved it. The truth is that the court said that we erred greatly. Arbitrary capricious and unreasonable is the standard that the court decided that we had not met, whatever, I didn't say that right, you know what I mean?
Yes, I do.
But, but what the court, but what the court said, and I've just pulled up the opinion, and I'd like to read some of it, because it's, it stinks, right? So I'm on page 37 of the resolution, so
You mean of the court, of the court here, I mean?
Yeah. Yes, yes, thank you, of the court's opinion. And I'm gonna read it, because I want everybody to focus on it, and then Ms. Krimko, I'd like you to help us understand how we can wrestle with it. Because I don't think that what we have here is a simple ratio to cut analysis, which this board has done a number of times in my tenure as well, and the standards that you've outlined, I understand them to be, as you say. But I don't know that you mentioned any matter that I'm aware of that involved the court overturning a board's decision. And so, so this is what this, this, this opinion says, in part. "The board's attempts at mimicking the language," he's speaking directly of, of Mike Irene's resolution, "not so kindly. "The board's attempts at mimicking the language from the purpose and intent section of the MLUL into its resolution places form over function. "In one example, the board noted that the Sullivan proposal provides more adequate light air and open space than a larger proposal based on floor area FAR restrictions. "Permitting someone to build a structure larger than what could be constructed by ordinance, "while claiming that the proposed smaller structure is better than the larger one, "which could also not be constructed, would destroy the underlying principles of zoning "and planning by removing any uniformity established by ordinance, "and would instead permit ad hoc zoning based on the board's personal whims. "The board also argues that a variance is permissible because it is de minimis. "A de minimis argument related to a permitted use is analyzed under subsection C2, "which means the variance request much, much present a better zoning alternative than the literal enforcement of the law. "As previously noted, the Sullivan's request fails to present a better option for the zone than a conforming use. "Rather than building a reasonable home for reasonable people," which was a quote from our resolution, "the Sullivan's seek to build an oversized home on a lot that would allow the largest possible conforming home to be constructed. "Upholding the board's grant would expand the definition of presenting a better option for the zone "beyond the phrases logical understanding, because then anyone who decides to change their siding while building a non-conforming house would qualify." He goes on to basically tell us that the basis on which we decided that this application was appropriate in 2007 was fatally flawed.
Right.
And, and while, while this new addition is smaller, and indeed it is different, and perhaps we could even agree that it doesn't meet the race judicata bar, how do we struggle with a court telling us that our prior decision was, was
I can address that.
Please.
I can address that, because I struggled with this as well, and I think that the difference would be is that the board granted the approval based on the proofs that were offered before them. So if we are able to overcome race judicata, and if the board will give me the courtesy of presenting this version of the case, you're going to hear different testimony, and you're gonna hear specific planning testimony from a licensed professional planner that's going to speak as to why this is a better zoning alternative, why they have a hardship based on the legally existing structure on the property, and the hardship in being able to add a master bedroom without exceeding the coverage. I think that the proofs, that I, I think the board made the right decision, I can say, and, and having clerked for Judge Lawson, and having advised him once that he was making the wrong decision, and then having it overturned on appeal, um, I can tell you that even sometimes our Superior Court judges make mistakes. I think he made a mistake in this decision, I think the board made the correct decision, and I think the problem is, is that the board made a decision to help a, um, for the right reasons, to help a, a fellow resident, but unfortunately, the proofs that were presented by that pro se applicant were light, to say the least.
I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, finish, Ms. Krimko, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah, so, you know, in, in the applicant's position, in the applicant's opinion, that, you know, if, if race judicata is overcome here, and I did the calculation, and I know 48 square feet doesn't seem like a lot, but that's 2% of the overall house size of reduction. And while 2% doesn't seem like a lot, it's significant when you're looking at a house that's only 23, 2,328 square feet. Um, so I think that the fact that the visually, as you would hear if we went through, the massing of this addition is significantly different in that it extends far less out to the back. So the impact is reduced. Um, I think that based on the proofs that were presented, were this to go up on appeal again, I think that a judge might have a different response, I think the problem was, is that Mr. Irene relied on what was the record before him, as that's all he can do, and, um, the record before him was not enough, before the board was not enough to support the variance in the face of a challenge. I believe that we can present a case that if the board were to approve, it would sustain a challenge.
I just, and I'm not suggesting what the board should do, that remains entirely up to the board, but just, just a couple comments for the board's consideration. And in fact, it, it may wish, it may, it may wish to reserve on the issue of race judicata here the entire application, and then revisit that at the end, if need be. I, I, I would suggest, though, that I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the notion of, well, adequate proofs weren't presented the first time, so we should do it again. It kind of flies against the notion of race judicata precluding people from having multiple bites at the apple. And the issue is this, I think. In our resolution, we did expressly cite the, what we considered to be, what the board considered to be, issues with the applicant being constrained to work around the existing structure, because it was not a tear-down bill, no. And my recollection is, we cited, for instance, the fact that there's a center hall, there's a center staircase that splits the structure in half, because it's my recollection that the architect, the first time around, testified to that. And that was one of the bases for the board granting relief in this matter, in terms of the hardship. The court, in its opinion, did not really pay much attention to that, for whatever reason. And I was a little disappointed not to see reference to that, because I think that was one of the reasons that the board decided to grant the relief. But as, as Mr. Leader references the page of the opinion, the one that, that I found kind of troubling was, and would present, I think, some difficulties for the applicant, is actually page 33. Because Judge Lawson, on page 33, focused on, on the size of the property, vis a vis the size of the house, and he says, in the middle of the opinion, he had just finished citing a Lang case, where in that case the board had granted, and was eventually affirmed by the court, bulk variance relief for a pool, and it was a uniquely shaped property, and the hardship was rooted in the land. I guess a, a standard pool couldn't be installed, and they were replacing an ugly above-ground pool with an in-ground pool, and the board granted them some variance relief to do that. But Judge Lawson says, "Unlike the undersized lot presented in Lang, "which created issues related to the setback and side yard requirements for the pools, "the Sullivan's lot does not present any issues directly related to the floor area caps. "There's no showing in the record of any exceptional narrowness, shallowness, "or shape of the Sullivan's lot, or exceptional topographic condition of the land, or any other extraordinary physical condition thereof, "which would cause undue hardship if the floor area cap is enforced." So remember, Mr. Leader, when he read that section of the opinion that follows, that was addressing the C2 flexible seat criteria, here the court's focusing on C1. Here, the court's focusing on C one hardship, and he goes on to say, here, the issue is solely related to the size of the structure and not the physical features of the Sullivan's lot. And I think the issue was, before Judge Lawson, at least in his mind, whether we agree with him or not, was he was looking at a structure that was, if I recall correctly, one hundred and forty one or one hundred and forty two square foot over. And he essentially said, why can't you conform? And that's what we were left with. He approved the setbacks, but he overturned us on the coverage, um, excuse me, on the habitable floor.
I I I understand that that was his opinion, and again, it doesn't mean it was the right opinion. And because this application has changed as much as I'd like to present to you that it has, I think it gives the opportunity for the board to allow this structure to remain in place and have a modest addition put on, rather than tear it down and build the new to build the modern house that, you know, could fit all of the amenities that are necessary for a homeowner within the twenty two hundred foot cap. Um, I think the circumstances are different. I would, I know they're different. I have an, may I share my screen? Like something I'd like to put up for purposes of the raised judicata issue.
Sure.
Can everybody, let me know when you can see it.
We can see it.
Okay, so what we had our architect do is prepare a plan that shows an overlay between the approved house, which you will see in the dark dashed lines, versus the proposed house. And as you see, excuse me, on the front elevation, there's almost no difference. As you look to the left side elevation, and what I was trying to emphasize to you is that the house itself generally is much smaller than the than the volume footprint, I'll say, of the plan that was before the board. So what what will visually be seen from outside the property is you can see it's shorter in height. It's significantly uh less deep, both with the first floor and the, both the first floor and the second floor. And then, as we go down again from the rear elevation, it 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 looks very similar. But then, as you look again from the side elevation, it's dramatically reduced. And the uh, so I I certainly think that this application is different enough that the board, and to quote, you know, we're quoting court cases, so to quote our Supreme Court, that there is sufficient evidence, that, I'm sorry, there are sufficient changes that would support this board uh holding that raised judicata doesn't apply and to allow us to go forward. Certainly, the question of approving it in light of Judge Lawson's prior decision is something that can be taken into account during the uh, during the weighing of the evidence, but I certainly think that um our our Supreme Court's instruction that raised judicata must be liberally construed in favor of the applicant to be in accord with the purpose of the municipal boards to provide the necessary flexibility to the zoning ordinance. I think that based on the issue of raised judicata itself, I think that the application, the applicant has demonstrated that there are enough changes of both visually, as well as the two percent reduction, as well as the shrinking of the first floor addition and the shrinking of the second floor addition to at least let us present our case. Obviously, then, the board would be able to go through the weighing process that they always do, but we would implore to allow us to at least present our experts and see if you agree that the evidence we're giving you would overcome even Judge Lawson's decision.
Mr. Irene, could you mark that um?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I I we didn't start the hearing technically as far as the, what would we mark it, Mike?
Well, we can mark it A dash one if you tell us what it is.
Yeah, I will. So A dash one is a plan prepared by Anthony Condorius Architect. It is, I just want to get you, it's called comparative zoning analysis for Sullivan residents. And I I will submit a copy of it to the board, obviously. And I just want to confirm the date.
It was part of the application.
Oh, it was submitted. Okay, good.
Uh, so, Ms. Krimko, is there a tape of the two thousand and seven hearing, an audio recording?
Um, I don't know. I relied on, I think there are transcripts, that's for sure. Because it was, it was appealed to the, it was appealed to when I did, I read it and I read the decisions.
Okay, so you didn't hear an audio, but you have read the um, the transcript up here.
I believe that I read, I I I will not raise my right hand and swear to it. I believe that in preparation, I did read the transcripts. I know that I read the briefs, I read the court's decision, and I think I even read a transcript of the court's decision. Whether or not, whether or not I read the underlying uh transcripts, I'm not sure.
But 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 part of your argument is that that Judge Lawson did not have what he needed in the record in order to sustain the board's decision. Um, I I wanna, I wanna point out that um, this board already approved something larger than what your application is this evening. And so, to me, this is different because of this decision. And as difficult as it can be to sit here and try and figure out what to do with things such as this, particularly things that we already said we thought was reasonable, I'm struggling on how to deal with this through the opinion. The only thing that I can do is try and understand what Lawson would say with regard to what you're prepared to present tonight. And to me, Lawson, you know, is not looking at the size of this. He's looking at the fact that you missed it at all. And he effectively is saying there's no justification for a bigger house. And while I, I think that 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 exhibit is terrific, it really does show you that this is more compact and smaller than what was proposed originally. It's very effective. But that's, Lawson didn't say it's too big. Lawson said there's no justification for exceeding the cap at all. With that being said, um, to the rest of the board, when we have dealt with this in the past, the issue that now are faced with is that the applicant would like to use our time to share with us exactly why uh this case is different from the old case. And while we've argued some of the legal stuff, uh, the applicant has not yet had an opportunity to put all the details in front of you with regard to what they proposed to do. So, Mr. Irene, I think it suggested, um, based on his experience and things that we've done before, that we consider, exactly what, Mr. Irene?
The board may want to consider reserving on the issue of raised judicata. Let the applicant put into the record whatever they want to put into the record. When they're done, you can revisit raised judicata and or the merits. So if you if you make a decision now, and if you decide that the application is barred by the doctrine of raised judicata, if a reviewing court, assuming someone takes it up, disagrees, you're gonna have to come back and do the merits. So from a practical standpoint, it may make sense to make a full record. That would also give you the opportunity to hear whatever Ms. Krimko and the applicant wished to present under oath with the witnesses and have a chance to hear from their architect. Reserve on raised judicata, and then at the end, you can revisit that as necessary. And also, if necessary, make a determination on the merits. Just a suggestion. You don't have to do that. You can deal with the issue of raised judicata now if you prefer.
Does anybody feel strongly about not proceeding in that manner and permitting the applicant to proceed on the merits while reserving on the issue of raised judicata? Only if you object, please.
I I do have a question about it. Um. To get beyond raised judicata, we have to determine that the, there's a substantial difference. But because the reversal was on the proofs and not on the plans, does it have to be a substantial difference in the proofs for us to be able to consider that this is not the same decision?
I I I would, I would suggest, and this is what I brought up earlier when I was we had colloquy with Ms. Krimko, is I I don't believe that saying that an applicant has bolstered their proofs is sufficient grounds to overcome the bar raised judicata, because the whole purpose of raised judicata is to say the matter's been decided, you don't get another bite at the app. So, for instance, if an applicant comes in and they don't bring a professional planner, and I'm not saying they necessarily need one every case, this is purely a hypothetical. An applicant comes in and they don't bring a professional planner and they lose, should they be able to come back with the exact same application and say, but this time we want to bring, present our planning testimony? The board would say, no, we've already decided that you've had your opportunity. So I I I'm going to suggest that it's not a question of what, how extensive the record was made beforehand. The question is going to be whether the application before that was adjudicated on the merits and overturned by the court in terms of the floor area, whether that application and this application, or let me rephrase it, whether this application is substantially similar to that application. Okay, and also whether or not there's been a substantial change in the circumstances in the property and surrounding neighborhood, in the zone. As far as I know, the zone changed, the zoning didn't change. Or not, as far as I know, there's no substantial change in the neighborhood.
If I think, I I think our proofs may demonstrate differently.
Okay, and that's fine. But what I'm saying is, it sounds like it's going to focus, at least where we are right now, on whether the application is substantially similar to the prior.
And, Mr. Irene, I mean, do we? It it's this, it's this court decision, right? It's this opinion from the court that I'm struggling with. Are we assessing the differences through the eyes of the court's opinion? Or are we looking at it uh as we looked at it before, and the boxes are different? I I mean, is it, is it as simple as, as just feeling as though it's different enough? Or is it important that we understand it based on what the court did to our decision?
I think the answer is yes, to both, and and I'll, and I'll tell you why I say that. Um, as you correctly pointed out, Mr. Chairman, the board approved it last time, the court reversed us, at least on the floor area, not on the setback. And the court's reasoning, you read. So the question now becomes is this, is this application substantially similar to the first? Because the first is a denial as a result of the court's opinion. That that approval for the floor error was voiding for the reasons in the court's opinion.
But I would, I would offer, and and I don't disagree with anything you said, Mike, but I would also offer that if we overcome raised judicata, the board needs to consider the proofs that are before them, not as compared to the proofs that were previously before them, but as they would for any application for a uh variance for the um, to exceed the the habitable square footage.
I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I think the the point remains, if the board looks at it and says, you know what, this is a substantially similar application, then simply saying, well, now we have planning testimony, or we have.
Agreed a hundred percent. What I'm suggesting is that if the board finds that the box, the volume box that is being proposed this time is substantially different to overcome raised judicata, then the board is looking at this as a new application based on the proofs of this application.
I I I would leave that to the board. I don't read Judge Lawson's opinion that way.
This is, this is what I'm struggling with, I I and I I do support proceeding with with the proof. So I I'm I'm okay with going forward. What I'm struggling with is that the board last time found the hardship to be based in the existing improvements and found the proposed exceedance of the floor area cap to be de minimis. Both of those arguments were rejected by the judge. Um, the fact that we may have planning testimony that can specifically point to what Lawson said, okay, I mean, that's a layup because it's right here in front of you. But my assessment of this particular application will be no different than the way I looked at it last time, and the judge said we were wrong. It it's just this thing we're caught into, and I just, I just, Ms. Krimko, before you start, I just want you to be aware of it. I'm I'm really, I'm really having trouble with how to deal with it.
Yeah, because I think, and again, it just to kind of boil it down, and and Ms. Krimko can present the testimony she sees fit. If last time the judge said essentially that there was no basis to grant a hundred and whatever it was, forty one square feet, why can't you just conform? Shaving off forty eight square feet, you would think Judge Lawson would say, why can't you just conform? I mean, you're getting, you've gotten closer. But that's, I'm, this, it's, it's entirely up to the board. We're just kind of reading his opinion.
Right, but now we have a judge's opinion that says, why can't you just conform? And I'd like to present to the board why we can't just conform and why this is a better zoning alternative uh than conforming.
We we can agree that, and I don't see any, any reason why if the proofs show that we wouldn't. But then we still have to deal with the fact that the judge would say, yeah, it doesn't matter.
Well, no, a- and I I'm not going to try and say your last name, sir, because I think I will mess it up, and I don't want to offend anybody. So if you want to say it for me, I'll say it afterwards, but uh.
Nachesny.
Mr. Nachesny, I don't disagree, and one of the differences that I think we're going to find here is that there was a uh objector, a neighboring objector who felt very strongly about this, so much so to hire an attorney and go to court. And I believe that the neighborhood and the the the, one of the changes in the neighborhood is, is that I believe, and obviously moving forward would prove that out, that the neighborhood actually supports this now. And that there wouldn't be such an objector that would appeal, that would object at your level or take it up on appeal, which.
That, that's, I I leave that to the board, but it's not a popularity contest. It doesn't matter who supports it, doesn't. We have to deal with the requirements of the municipal land.
I understand, but Mr. Maches, Mr. Nachesny asked the question, and I think that if it never gets to, well, first of all, Judge Lawson retired. But putting that aside, and that he's not even sitting there anymore, but putting that aside, um, whatever judge.
Does that mean we're no longer bound by his judgment?
No.
I didn't realize that expired when he retired.
It's not, but he, you know, it 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 won't go back before him, so it would be a fresh set of eyes should it get there, but it's the applicant's position. I don't think it would get there if the board were to vote in favor.
Mr. Irene, I I have a question. If if we were to approve uh this application, would it automatically go back to the court? I mean, how does that, how does that work from this point on?
No, but, but. No, no, it wouldn't automatically go go back anywhere, I don't believe. Um, someone would have to take an appeal. But but again, that's, I would suggest to you that we're guided by these the standards of the municipal land use law, and we're guided by the judgment that already occurred. Uh, and that should be the basis of your determination, more so than what happens if there's subsequent review.
But to answer your question, Dr. Lauffer, there's no automatic jurisdiction. The board no longer, the the court no longer has jurisdiction. And the only way it gets back before a court, whether you approve or deny it, would be if a party appealed it similarly to the last time and went to the court.
It was, it was overruled, or we were overruled based on a specific reason to go back to them again, or to go approve it again with that same specific reason that it was turned down the first time is a little bit problematic.
Well, that's, I think, what Chairman Leader was was referencing in terms of the law of the case. I mean, there is, this does not come to us out of left field. There's history to this. And that's what the board is, I don't want to say struggling with, but considering. That's why there's been this colloquy.
I I just, by one more time, this board approved this. This board thought that the old application, whatever you say it was, Dan, in terms of square footage, was reasonable. With all due respect, I disagree with the court's opinion. I think he made the wrong call here. There's just, there's no question in my mind about it. But at the end of the day, that doesn't change the fact that I feel bound by this, by this opinion. And um.
Unless you find, unless you find that there are different circumstances here that could support an approval that is not in con, is not contradictory to that opinion.
There's nothing about what you can present, which is going to change the fact that you're over. And he said there was no reason to be over, and we dealt with hardships in the structure before, and we did it in the way that we always do it. I mean, I remember enough about this one that it was presented fairly well. The arguments that were raised in court were not limited to the record, right? I mean, Mr. Irene went in and made your case and lost. And so he had all of that and all that time and all that preparation and.
Yeah, yes and no, Mr. Leader. I mean, he could not rely on evidence that wasn't in the record. So if there wasn't testimony as to why this is a better zoning alternative, if there wasn't testimony about the preservation of um structures and conservation and and some of the things we'd like to demonstrate before you tonight.
But do you know, Ms. Krimko, that that, because we always talk about that, this board feels that way. This is a public meeting. This board regularly sees the benefit in preserving existing structures and vary even, adding to them, making them custom, making them unique. And 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 we see that, and we regularly grant variances just like the ones we granted to your client fourteen years ago. Um, was that not in the record?
I don't know that there was any affirmative. I don't know that there was any affirmative expert testimony to that effect. No.
There were no experts, but that's different because the applicant chose not to bring it.
Understood.
But, but we talk about that stuff, and I can't say specifically that, that we did or didn't there. But that's regularly the, the basis for these, uh, slight deviations from the cap with an existing structure.
And we, Mr. Chairman, the resolution, by the way, since we're talking about, the record should reflect that it's thirteen pages long. And it does, it does reference the fact that the Appken was working constrained in their design by working around the existing structure. It's a Dutch colonial with a center stairway that essentially divides the structure in half. And it was difficult to design the proposed expansion around the existing features of the house. And the board further noted that the Appken testified, and the architect did as well, I believe, that there were several iterations of the plan. Each time attempting to reduce the excess floor area. And that this was the final plan that they could develop based upon the structure. So that, that's part of what we had in the, in the resolution.
But that isn't what I'm speaking about. I'm, I'm speaking about the, when looking at the purposes of the municipal land use law. Um, and I.
But again, and, and I don't, I don't want to preclude Ms. Krimko from presenting whatever she would like to present, but we're not talking about. A change in the facts. We're talking about a change in the presentation of those facts.
Well, we're talking, we're talking about a change in the structure sufficient to have the board listen to this application anew.
And that's, and that's a determination that the board's going to have to make. Yeah, I agree. I mean, that's what, that's what this is all about. Whether or not that the applications are substantially the same or not, or substantially similar, or however you want to phrase it. That's what it's going to come down to.
Because however Judge Lawson described the, um, you, you can't look at what he did in a vacuum. He had all of the evidence that was before him. And he's human and he saw what was being presented and that. Presumably had, by reviewing the evidence, had an impact on his decision. You can't look at. The floor area cap in a vacuum without considering all of the other factors, and we'd like to show you that based on these factors. It's even more reasonable to grant it this time, and we think it would be sustained before court, should it ever get there, which we don't believe it will.
Anybody else have any questions before we proceed on the merits?
I have a question just about the first plan that was put up there. Was it drawn by Mr. Condors based upon the twenty-five-hundred square foot that was taken?
Yes, it, it, we, we, I'm sorry.
Plus square foot that was approved.
So, uh, again, and, and I apologize, I, but your, your audio went out and I thought that you had finished, so I apologize. Um. The, what we did was, and what Mr. Condors can testify to, is we got the plans that were approved. Physically got them.
Twenty-five-hundred square foot.
Correct, correct.
So it probably wouldn't have been built that large anyway.
Uh, uh, again, I'd have to have Mr. Condors testify to how he found those changes in the calculations. And whether or not it's something the building department would have found, or would have relied on the fact that you had a licensed architect. Sign and seal plans and indicate the size.
We should know of presenting it. As though it ref, it reflected what the board had approved based on the.
But it. We have. Understood, Mrs. Quigley, but the problem is, the board never saw a set of plans that showed twenty-three-hundred, so. So, i- i- you know, it, it's, it's. It, it, it's hard on my end, obviously, because.
Sure.
When, when you approved twenty-three-hundred, you thought you were approving the house that was before you and you weren't technically. So you don't even know what the house would have looked like at twenty-three-hundred.
Right.
I, I don't, I, I have.
But I don't, go ahead.
Sense it was, we should go right to it. But I, I don't think that you're properly representing what happened. If it was measured incorrectly, because Mr. Condors has a better understanding of how you're supposed to measure properties in Fairhaven. Than the architect that prepared the initial plans, that doesn't mean that it would look any different. Than what the plans were that we approved. It means that there are things that Anthony's learned over the years about how we do it. That the first architect didn't know.
Fair, exactly, and that's exactly what I'm, that's exactly the position that I'm saying that, um. But, but if measured correctly, that building would have had to have been shrunk to meet the twenty-three, whatever the number was that you approved. That's all I'm suggesting.
Well, what we need to understand from Mr. Condors is how we're going to reach our starting point tonight of how big the house is today. Because I, I'd like to understand, uh, what the plan said when they built it. I'd like to understand how he's measured the as-built condition and what the deviation is from the existing home. To what was actually approved by the building department in two thousand and eight.
Okay.
All right, I think we're ready.
We're going to reserve on the issue of raised judicata and then we'll start to.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to introduce, uh, Anthony Condors, have him sworn and move his set of plans into evidence. And then we can get started, and I thank you, Mr. Chair, for laying out exactly what you're looking for from him. It makes my job easier in presenting him.
So, Mr. Condors, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand. We're going to swear in, please. You do swear in testimony to give the board a big truth, all truth, not but truths?
Yes, I do.
And if you give us your full name, spell your last, your address for the record, please.
Right, Anthony Condors, C O N D O U R I S, uh, twenty Bingham Avenue, Rumston, New Jersey.
And, Mr. Condors, you're a licensed architect state in New Jersey, and you've testified before this board in the past?
Many times, yes, thank you.
We submit him as an expert, Mr. Chair?
Definitely, thank you.
Okay, what I'd like to move in is A two in evidence are the plans prepared by Mr. Condors's office. Uh, they were submitted into the board and they are dated six-four-twenty and revised through eleven-six-twenty.
Consisting of three sheets.
I'm sorry, yeah, consisting of three sheets.
A dash two, thank you.
Okay, and, uh, Anthony, I, I'm going to turn it over to you and I'll share my screen. If you let me know, uh, which plan you'd like me to start with, the, the plans we moved in as A two or the comparative zoning plans. I think perhaps A two, to walk the board through what's existing there today and how you measured it.
And if I may, if I may, before you begin, Mr. Condors, Ms. Krimko, we also had a survey. Why don't we mark that, prepared by Charles. Middle initial V, as in Victor Bell Jr., PLS. Date of January twenty-two thousand twenty, we'll mark the survey A dash three, please.
Okay, certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, so. What I, I'm going to, I'm going to hand it over to you, Anthony, and, and have you start by talking about what's existing there today. Uh, what we're proposing and what the difference is between the existing building and the proposed building.
Okay, right, so today, um, the, the current house is, uh, approximately, not approximately, it's a one thousand nine hundred. And thirty-eight square feet, and it consists of, um, three bedrooms on the second floor, um, and the. On the first floor at the rear of the house, you'll see that there's a, an existing family room on, on the first floor plan, which is in the middle there. And, uh, that is, that, that was the addition that was constructed, uh, by Wright, uh, after, after the, uh. The, uh, case was appealed. Um, so and what we're doing, if you look at the next floor plan over, is adding a master bedroom. And we're basically following the existing roof line straight back to the rear. Um, and you can see, uh, constructing the master bedroom, which has, uh, its own private bath and a walk-in closet. So this, um, this is really structurally the only place we could, we could add this, uh, bedroom to, and, um. It made the most sense, and even from a design standpoint. We were able to get past the stairs and get to the back of the house and create this very, uh, efficient layout. I think you're muted, Jennifer.
As you heard, my dogs were barking, so I muted to, uh, avoid that. Um, let's talk about how you're, what your understanding is with regard to how you measure the habitable square footage. Of the existing house.
Right, uh, well, in Fairhaven, um, as you all well know, there, um, you basically have to include everything that's within the. The exterior walls. You don't, you don't get any credits for stairs. Or porches or anything like that. Anything that's heated is considered living space. Um, when I do that, I use my computer and I basically draw a line around the plans. And I can get a exact square footage of what's there. So that's how we measure square footage, uh, for our houses.
Mr. Condors, do you have an opportunity to review the as-built plans of the house as it sits today?
I did.
And what was the square footage on those plans?
Um, currently today, uh, it's a total of one thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight.
Uh, you're saying that's what it is. I'm asking you what the number is on the plans that were approved by the building department.
Oh, I mean, what? I'm sorry, approved by the building department or the zoning board back fourteen years ago? I'm sorry.
Let me ask my question again. So, so the applicant, after the approval, and then after the partial, uh, overturning of our decision. Presented construction plans to the building department and built what exists today. It was on the first floor. I'd asked whether or not you'd seen the as-built plans from that architect.
Yes, I did.
Okay, I want to know how big he said it was.
Oh, uh, well, man, man, now that was a third architect, believe it or not, um. So that I don't, I did not have his. All of his plans. I did not have the square footage numbers from him.
I, I, I'm not trying to drag this out. I'm trying to tie into what Ms. Krimko presented to the board. Which is essentially that the plans that they approved was several hundred square feet over. Uh, what was actually listed in the resolution. So I'm trying to figure out whether or not the existing home. I, I, I trust that your measurements are currently accurate, but I'm trying to understand whether or not when it was built. Whether or not it was showing at nineteen forty-nine or whatever you say it is today, or whether it was shown as something greater or less than.
And, and I think that what's, what's important, Mr. Leader, is. The, the, the applicant didn't build the first floor as you had approved it. The applicant got a second architect and had a new first floor designed. And had that submitted to the building department and built, and it was a smaller footprint than what the board approved. What was actually constructed was different than the plan you approved. Which is why I mistakenly said it didn't need the variance relief, because. I, in my experience, particularly in one where Mr. Irene is the attorney. His resolution states that the plans have to be, you know, the same as the ones that the board approved. So I would have been surprised if they were able to build as of right. A different footprint than what this board had previously approved, albeit smaller.
I'm, I'm still confused. I don't think I have the answer I'm looking for, but I also am pretty sure it doesn't matter. So.
I could just say that we went back and took our own, just because there were so multiple sets of plans, um, from different architects. I think I'm actually the fourth architect, actually, to be in on this. Um, I went back and. Took my own measurements just to make sure, because I found some discrepancies earlier. So we literally went out and measured the foundation to make sure we had everything correct. As correct as.
So what you have there, Mr. Condors, is what you physically measured, not just off the set of plans from X amount of years ago.
That's absolutely correct, yes.
Great, thank you. I, I guess what I'm struggling with is that this application and the original application are different by about fifty feet or so, correct?
Correct. So, but. That, that, what was it? The num, the, the, the number approved versus what we're seeking is different by about fifty feet. That's correct.
Trying to find all these lost square feet, because I know that the first floor isn't as big as they initially proposed it. I can see that the second floor is just a slightly different layout, but it's, it's pretty similar. With the square feet on.
I think that what I can do to help you with that, Mr. Leader. Is, we actually drew up a, um. We, we, we drew up a, a, a chart. I'm just trying to find which chart it is. Here it is, the building data. Because we too were trying to find out what went wrong here, how it happened. So, Anthony, I'm going back to what I moved in as A one into evidence.
Right.
And I'm going to, and I'm going to blow it up. And A is the number that was, um. Shown on the plans, I'm sorry, A is the number that was shown on the original plans that you approved. And B is what Anthony recalculated with his computer as to what those plans actually showed. As opposed to the number that was written on it. So Anthony, let's go over it, a- a- and this is, this is separate and apart from what was actually constructed.
Is that even relevant, though, the net, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the number that you say. Well, if you, they really built what was shown on the plans, it would have been twenty-five-hundred. If at the time of the meeting, we had caught. That the measurements were off by two hundred square feet, then we would have, or the board at that time. Would have considered the twenty-five-twenty-two is the number that variance relief was being asked for. I don't think it really has any bearing that. What was there really wasn't twenty-three-hundred.
And that's, that's my point, Mr. Nachesny, so. The house we're proposing is actually significantly smaller. Than the house that was actually approved. Not the number, I get it, the number was one thing. But the house that was approved was a volume of a house much bigger. Than the one we're proposing now. And I was just bringing this chart up, Mr. Nachesny, to. Answer the question as to where did that square footage go, just to explain the difference.
Well, then you're going to work off the twenty-three-seventy-six number, not the twenty-five-twenty-two number.
But we can't work off the twenty, because the twenty, we're showing you where he made the mistake to call it twenty-three. Twenty, twenty-three-seventy-six, when it was actually twenty-five-twenty-two. That's where the square footage is. So on the first floor, um. You show that the approved first floor. As shown on the plans was twelve-hundred-and-sixty-nine square feet. Uh, based on the cap, miscalculation, but the actual calculation of the approved first floor was thirteen-twenty-two.
Right, based on what I, the way I took my measurements, so, um. I'm not sure how the other architect measured it, but I'm just saying what I measured was the number that I'm showing you.
And then on the second floor, the other architect showed it as eleven-hundred-and-seven square feet. And you show it as actually, uh, twelve-hundred square feet.
Right, correct.
And then total, he showed a total square footage, habitable square footage of twenty-three-seventy-six. And you're showing a total square footage of. Twenty-five-twenty-two as approved.
Correct.
Okay, and the first floor, um. That was approved, so I think that this goes to the question as to the difference. So the first floor as approved. Uh, was thirteen-hundred-and-twenty-two square feet, and we actually cut that first floor back to twelve-eighty-one square feet. So the first floor was constructed about forty square feet smaller. Anthony? We may have lost him. I know he said he was having connectivity issues.
I think I might be, oh boy. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that. I don't know what's happening here. I keep losing, the meeting keeps cutting out on me. I'm sorry.
So, a- at the time. At the time of the application. The board thought they were approving a house first floor from eight-hundred-and-twelve to twelve-hundred-and-sixty-nine. But they were actually approving eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine to thirteen-hundred-and-twenty-two.
So the discrepancies, Ms. Krimko, seem to me to really be in what was already there. When the application was made. It's not really that the architect who presented it. Or designed the first application made a mistake on what they were seeking to build. But rather, they made a mistake on how they measured the square footage.
Correct.
That was already there.
Correct, if it was at, both, both with regard to what was there.
If you look at the B numbers, it seems that they're really not consistent with. What we're under existing at first application. Those are the biggest differences between the A and B numbers. Where it was just presented as a house that was smaller than it already was.
Right, so the, right, yeah, correct. I see what you're saying, Mrs. Quigley, that. That the delta between the, the two numbers, A and B, are greater with. What, with the existing as opposed to the addition.
So it's not really that the addition you're seeking is so drastically smaller or anything, it's that. The board was not given, for whatever reason, maybe a mistake in how you measure square feet in Fairhaven. Um, the board was given erroneous information about the size of the house that was already on the law.
Correct, the, 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 the proportion was, was a bigger mistake as to the existing, but additionally mistakes. Slight mistakes, but still mistakes also with regard to what was proposed.
Mm-hmm.
I, but, but the board approved it anyway.
Yeah.
Right, I, I just. Right, I, I just want to point out that the board approved the house of a certain size and the court overturned the board, the board's decision of a house that was substantially smaller than you're saying it measured. So the deviation, to the extent that we care about what the court thought, really doesn't matter. That they didn't, they didn't know about it. We certainly didn't know about it. I disagree with Mr. Nachesny's conclusion that we would have approved it at 2,500 square feet. I don't know what we would have done. I know that we would have been upset, and I know that it doesn't feel good 14 years later to hear this described, which was approved by the board as a comedy of errors. It didn't feel that way that night, I assure you of that. Um, I think we should move on.
Okay, any other questions before we follow the chair's instruction to move on? Okay. So Anthony, in looking at your, uh, plans that we're proposing today, what is the square footage of the addition on the second floor that you're proposing?
We are proposing 390 square additional, an additional 390 square feet for the second floor.
Okay, and that's.
No changes to the first floor.
Okay, and in looking at, you, let's just walk through what the visual impact would be, uh, from the four sides.
Right, so if you look at the, I'm sorry, if you look at the.
You there, Anthony? Anthony?
I think, I think I might be. Okay, I apologize for that. I need to probably go to a different computer next time. I'm sorry.
If you're on Wi-Fi, Mr. Condors, maybe, oh, do you have a door closed? Maybe you want to open the door to preserve your Wi-Fi connection?
Anthony, if I may add as well, if you have a, the ability to hard connect right into a, uh, uh, modem or a router, that would be great.
Unfortunately, I don't. Um, I just opened a door to the, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I hope that helps. So can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. So the front elevation.
The front elevation loo- looks basically the same. If you look at the left side elevation, you'll see that shaded area is what the, um, is the bulk that's being added to the house. So the, there's our, as you can see, there's already a first floor that hangs off.
Lost you, Tony.
I know sometimes if you turn off your camera, that helps.
Audio only might help if we can do that.
I'm gonna.
Yeah, turn your camera off, Anthony. And it takes less bandwidth.
That's, okay, I hope that helped. So I'm sorry, I don't know what you heard me saying, what you didn't hear me say, but.
You said that you went through the front indicating that there was no change, that the addition on the left side is shown, uh, on the drawing.
Right, and that's, that's the best illustration of where we're adding the actual bulk to the building.
Okay, and going back to the first floor and the existing second floor, is there any way to convert space that's existing there for use as the master bedroom?
Uh, on the first floor? N- n- no, there, there is no practical way to put a master bedroom on the first floor of this house. It would really, uh, compromise the layout.
Okay, and on the second floor, to try and add a master bedroom of any appreciable size would effectively eliminate at least one of the existing bedrooms.
It would, and you could see that the existing bedrooms are already very small. So, um, to lose, to lose another bedroom would be, would really, uh, have a detrimental effect on the house.
Okay, if.
This, Mr. Condors, what, what are the dimensions of the proposed master bedroom?
Anthony?
Yes.
Now, what are the, what are the dimensions of the proposed master bedroom?
Um, the, the bedroom itself is 13 foot nine by 19, and then we have a seven, an eight by eight bathroom and a seven by six closet.
13, nine by 19?
Yes.
It's a pretty good size.
It.
Anthony, you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Um, are there any other questions for Anthony? As it relates to what we're proposing?
Mr. Condors, can you help us understand how the layout on the second floor is different from the layout on the second floor in the initial set of plans that were approved by the board in 2007?
Yes, I don't have those plans right in front of me, but.
I, I actually, I actually have them.
Okay.
So if we could move those in as A4, those are the Monafort plans. And I'm just, I'm, forgive me, I'm just trying to read the, um, just trying to get the date. For whatever reason, it's.
Probably on the right side of the page.
I know, I'm looking. It's not coming up for some reason. Um, I have a hard copy here. I'm, the plans that are presented before you are dated 2,028.
Um, but the application was '07.
Right, and there was a note, it was revised, I guess, post-approval. The note was, uh, clarification for the board.
So your representation is that these are the same plans, but for that change, but nothing we're asking about has changed.
Right, so the plans have two revision dates. One is 9/24/07, as per the 7/16/07 denial letter, and the 2/20/08 says clarification for board.
The hearings were in 2008 for the prior resolution, February and March 2008. There's, there's a reference in the resolution to a February 20th, 2008.
So then.
End of.
Right, so then these are those, these are those plans.
I apologize, I'm using the wrong date. I thought that was directly from the, uh, court's opinion. But that, but, but fine, whenever it was, it was.
Okay, so Anthony, in that, in that one, just i- in the back, I think that if you're looking at the site plan as was approved, it shows the, um, two-story addition in the back, and then the extension with the octagonal portion out the back as well, making it a much deeper building. A- Anthony? Anthony, you there?
Ms. Krimko, we absolutely understand the problems. Um, we've all been living through this together. So, um, do you want to make an adjustment somehow so that we can get, uh, the benefit? Or you wanna, you wanna move on to somebody else, maybe, and?
Yeah, so I, I think that, you know, I'd like to introduce Kathleen Sullivan. Have her sworn, and I think that she can actually go through almost as good, maybe not in architectural speak, but almost as well as, um, Anthony would have with regard to the old plans versus the new plans and the changes that were made. So if I could have Kathleen sworn.
Okay, Ms. Sullivan, if you'd give us your full name, spell your last year address for the record, please.
Kathleen Sullivan, S-U-L-L-I-V-A-N, 47 Lake Avenue.
And if you'd raise your red hand, Ms. Irene, you do swear a testimony to give the board a bit of truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so Kathy, before you speak to, going to what the board members had asked, how is this proposal for the second floor different, in your opinion, aside just from the size of it? What's different about it?
So, um, so obviously the size, uh, the layout of the master bedroom proposed, um, and also the feature of the balcony and window placement are different. Um, and, uh, you know, if you want me to kind of take the board quickly through like a clip.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I can show you. I mean, the one is, is that, you know, you have two separate walk-in closets in one. Let me, let me pull this up on the screen.
Yeah, I mean, it was, we've gone through, this is our fourth, um, um, architect. We started with Montefiore, and I think that's probably the plans that the board saw that had the balcony, and that was enormous. And we didn't realize it at the time. It was calculated differently because I'm not an architect and, and neither's my husband by trade. And, um, we found out it was so big when we had a friend over that was gonna do, um, a slate patio in the back, and he used the, the spray paint gun to, to figure out where it would be. And I sat there and I said, this is enormous. I said, we can't go back this far. I won't have a backyard. Um, so we ended up, so this is the, the, the plan that we're speaking about that was really big. Um, and we decided, um, at the end of the day, not to do, even after the board granted us approval on the two-story, um, when we went back and, um, after getting the denial from Judge Lawson, we constructed a first floor only, um, and we didn't go back out as far on the first floor for that same reason that I needed more of a backyard, having two kids. So when we constructed it, um.
So you didn't cons, you didn't construct this breakfast room in this shape, and you actually pulled the back wall in more than that.
There's no breakfast nook at all, and we only went out, um, we were approved, I think, 16 feet to go out, and we went out 14 feet across the entire back. And I think the back is about 38 feet long, so that's, you know, 72 square feet, I guess, of, you know, what we didn't use.
Right, and as far as how is this addition different than the one that you were previously approved for? Meaning the, the bedroom size, the layout, the closet space?
So the balcony, um, is no more. The bath is not that five pieces. I think that's what they call it. There's no soaking tub in that. It's just a shower. Um, and the overall size is, um, not that big at all, and the separate closets are, are also not happening. So we scaled back tremendously, as you can see.
Okay, so you got rid of a bathtub, you have a much smaller bathroom, and you have one small closet as opposed to those two closets?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I believe, I believe that answers the question that a board member asked, and, um.
But I guess how many feet was the proposed master bedroom for, on the second floor, brought in from that original plan?
I can tell you. It is now coming out at 14 feet, one and a half inches.
Mm-hmm.
And the original plan that was approved, bear with me, I apologize, Monafort plans, showed it as 19 feet, seven and a half inches, so it, it actually is almost six feet shorter.
And it, that doesn't even include, that 19 feet didn't include the balcony either, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
That's a pretty substantial change, I think.
Uh, so, but five feet or six feet times the 27 across the back is plus or minus 150 square feet. Downstairs, we didn't build it as far. It was originally approved. Uh, uh, 75 feet or so was saved, so 2,25, based on the original plans, and the original variance was only for a couple of hundred square feet. Why doesn't it conform now?
So, so again, because the plans that, the, the nu- the, the numbers you're talking about are based on a misunderstanding of that number, and that's why I was trying to stress it before. Not to say that it was based on an error, but to say that the size of the house, putting aside the number that was put in the board's resolution, if I could just ask you to suspend that for a moment, the difference in the size of the house that was shown on the plans as approved by the board, putting aside whatever the number is, when you look at what the actual size of that house was versus the actual size of this house, it's a significant difference in size. So that number, that 2,300 number, is an arbitrary number that was put in the resolution based on a representation by the architect.
It was not, it was, it was, no, the record will reflect, it was not arbitrary. That's what the applicant represented to the board, and that's what the resolution granted. We didn't pull it out of the air.
Mike, I just said it's arbitrary based on misinformation given to you by the architect. That's exactly what I just said.
But it's not arbitrary.
Well, it's arbitrary in that it doesn't have any true connection to the size of the house you were looking at.
But, but regardless, the house has been built. They built the one-story. So the question's gonna, the question's gonna be, why can't the applicant conform? You're 50.
Well, that's not, that's not a, okay, first of all, that's not a question for the architect or the applicant. That's a question for my planner, who's gonna present that. But secondly, we were responding directly to Mr., to the board chair's question as to, we only granted for a couple hundred feet. If you shrink everything down, how come you don't conform? And the reason we don't conform is because we shrank it down from what was presumed to be 2,300 feet, but was actually 2,500 feet.
I would, I would suggest that that's probably gonna be a question for your architect, though. Why can't you conform?
Well, separate from that, the, the answer to the question, Ms. Krimko, is that the house is substantially smaller than the original plan, but you found 200 square feet plus or minus that you didn't know you had. And so notwithstanding the fact that it's smaller, it's only losing 50 square feet based on the original resolution.
It's losing 50 square feet based on the original resolution, but it's substantially reducing the overall size of the room and the addition.
Right.
The original house was larger.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Hmm.
So, so, so there, the, the argument really is that while the application may only appear to be 50 square feet different from the original approval, in reality, the house is 250 square feet smaller, but the numbers were off. Yeah, I, I think you tied that together from where you started in a way that I now understand it, um, better in terms of the purpose of raising.
Right, and it was very hard for me to do without having the benefit of presenting all these plans and showing it all to you. So I did the best I could. I apologize if I wasn't clear enough.
And if I may just say, um, like I said, we're on our fourth architect, and it has been beyond frustrating. Um, and I do apologize for the errors the first time. I'm not an architect. I paid someone to, to draw these up. I went through Monticello, Jim Daly, Bruce, I forget his last name, top of my head, from Rumson. And it wasn't until Anthony, and, and poor Anthony Condors, when he first came over and he told me all my numbers were wrong. Um, you know, he had the courage to, to kind of walk us through why, and we had to start completely over on this. And he came back several times, and I know he met with certain people in town to go through the numbers. Um, so finally, I feel like, and it seems like it's the proper size now, having lived in the house with the one-story addition, um, you know, for the past 10 years or so. Um, but it, that, when we talk about the comedy of errors, it has been the architectural errors. Um, benounced to me and, and everybody that was on the board the same, you know, 10 years ago. Um, we, and we walked through this, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Mr. Condors, just, just so I understand, can you please walk us through why the, uh, habitable floor area can't conform?
Yes, uh, we would loo- we would lose, I hope you can hear me, by the way.
Yes.
Great, uh, we could, if we were to lose the 128 square feet, uh, um, we'd basically have to cut that master bedroom almost in half. So it'd be very, very difficult to get a, a decent-sized bedroom and a, and a master bath and master closet. So we'd be forced to actually eliminate a bedroom from the rest of the house to create this masters, master bedroom.
So based.
I, I just want to point out that that was the same, it was the same in 2008 when we reviewed it, and I agree with you now, the same. And I agree with you now the same way I agreed with you then. You're, you're stuck with a really difficult structure to work around. Nothing's changed.
So, and, and again, that may go to the proofs. I'm just speaking about raised judicata. So at this point, from an architectural standpoint, Anthony's testimony is similar that we have a structure that we could not add a master bedroom to without losing bedrooms based on the configuration of it. Anthony, if we started over, if we knocked this house down and you started over, could you design a house in a way that could conceivably fit the same living space, but make it more efficient and have the stairways and hallways in a way that you could fit all the bedrooms, including the master bedroom and the space and effectively have a more efficient house and do it within the 2,200 square feet?
Yeah, absolutely. We've, we've, uh, pretty much mastered squeezing all that stuff into these 2,200 square foot houses that are from the R5 zone. So yes, if, but this, the configuration of this house would make that almost impossible.
But, but we could make that room smaller, right? I mean, even if you needed what's really not a very large bathroom or a very large closet. And you made the bedroom 13 by 13, you could chop off 85 square feet pretty easily. And again, I, I don't even, I don't even like where we sit, right? Cause I, I the board voted in favor of this. I just, I, you know, I've got really nice residents here. I just want everybody to understand. The board, the board understood this, you know, 15 years ago, but we're into it. So this bedroom could be 13 by 13 and you could shave off 85 square feet, couldn't you?
Architecturally, yes, we could do that.
We would still be over though.
I know. I know.
So, you know, the test one is you can't have enough bedrooms for the family and have a master suite in that 2,200 based on the configuration of this house.
But, but we're locked in based on the addition. So at some point, there were decisions made. And thankfully, they made a decision to, to bring in the rear wall on the first floor addition and they've left themselves some additional square footage against the cap. And so while it's still maybe too tight, it's not as if all of this, um, was pre-existing. There were some decisions made and some balancing in terms of how the spaces were gonna be laid out.
Understood.
Not a big house. No one's gonna argue it's a big house.
Are there any more, are there any questions from Mrs. Sullivan or Tony before we introduce our planner?
I have some questions in my report. If I could just touch base on them real quick.
Please.
I think there's questions for Mr. Condors. Um, can you provide some testimony about the exterior materials and color? Is it going to match the existing?
Uh, I haven't discussed the color. If the homeowner's planning on painting it or not, but we're gonna match the siding and, um, Kathy could probably testify if she's planning on changing the color.
No, I don't think I'd plan to change the color beyond a beige or a white.
But the materials will match what's existing or, or there'll be change consistently to match.
It'll be, it'll remain cedar.
Okay. Um, are there any landscaping improvements proposed or tree removal required?
No.
Um, and then I believe that is all from my report. Thank you.
Ready, Jen?
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'd like to introduce Andrew Janiu.
Sir, give us your full names, by your last address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Janiu, J A N I W, 315 Highway 34, Colts Neck, New Jersey.
And we're gonna swear in. If you'd raise your right hand, you do swear your testimony to give the board a bit of truth, all truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Hey, Andrew, you're a licensed professional planner of the state of New Jersey?
I am.
And have you testified before this board in the past?
I have. Uh, for the record, for the record, um, I am also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have a bachelor's and master's degree in civil engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology, currently serving as the planner for the borough of Carteret, Middlesex County and the township of Livingston in Essex County, as well as redevelopment planner for Tom's River, South Amboy, Levington and Plainsboro. Um, I have appeared before this board and boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, we'd submit him as an expert unless there's any objections.
I don't have a problem. Okay. Thank you.
Andy, having, um, no, you've reviewed the, um, court decision. You reviewed the prior resolution and you've reviewed all of the plans, the prior plans, the current plans. And you obviously had an opportunity to sit through the hearing tonight. So from, from, from a professional planner's perspective, why, in your opinion, expert opinion, would this qualify for an, uh, variance for, uh, going above the cap as to the habitable square footage recognizing Judge Lawson's, uh, opinion?
Sure. So, uh, in order to qualify, this is obviously bulk relief. So these are all C standards that we're addressing. And Judge Lawson, uh, spoke about the C1 hardship. Uh, but Judge Lawson's opinion, quite frankly, focused on the characteristics of the lot. So in this case, we have a lot that's oversized for the district. A corner lot within your R5 needs to be 7,000 square feet. We're actually a 7,500 square foot corner lot. The difficulty, the difficulty we have is that our lot width is smaller than what's required within the district. 70-foot lot width is required. We have a 50-foot lot width. So what that does is leaves us a very narrow, uh, buildable area if we were to be entirely conformant. Because it's a corner lot, because it's narrower, we have to provide front yard setbacks along both, uh, frontages, which would lead, lead us essentially a building envelope that would be 18 feet wide by, I believe, if we applied the rear yard standard as well, 18 by 95. So when, when we look at all the variety of, you know, what are our zoning options, the building new and conforming, we would have a home that's incredibly out of character with the neighborhood. It would be essentially a railroad type of unit. So that leaves us with the existing house. And Judge Lawson doesn't recognize that in the C1 standard, one of the recognized hardships is lawfully existing structures there upon the lot. And that, that's, I did believe what Anthony was kind of focused on in that if we, if we are to do something here with this house, we have to deal with the configuration of the house, the stairs related to the house. And, and we're somewhat bootstrapped into what we can and can't do because of the characteristics of this house. Um, and I wanna take a step back at this point and kind of go back to your master plan because this actually ties in very well together. One of, one of the key points within your master plan and the most recent reexaminations has been that Fairhaven has been experiencing a lot of pressure for infill development and redevelopment of lots. And one of the citations within your master plan and reexamination is that these, uh, new tear downs and ex, or expansions, a lot of times are out of character with the characteristics of the neighborhood. That's something the Sullivans are very cognizant of. What they're trying to do is to create something that, that is very much in character and doesn't really alter the look of this house. The improvements are all essentially to the rear of the house. It's fairly well landscaped and fairly non-intrusive upon the neighbors. And we'll get to that a little bit. But in response to, you know, those concerns within your master plan, it, it is something that's intended to further the characteristics of the neighborhood as opposed to a tear down. Mentioned if this were a tear down and we had to come back conforming, we'd have something that's significantly out of character. Jen, can we put up the aerial exhibit?
As A4 is in, let me just grab, let me put it up and then you can describe what it is since your office prepared it. So just describe what A5 is.
So this is an aerial exhibit of the, uh, neighborhood of, take it, take it from this, the county's GIS system. So you'll see here the, uh, the lots and blocks are overlaid on each lot. The blue line, uh, represents the zone line between the R5 and the R10 within Fairhaven. And the red line is actually the, uh, borough boundary with Red Bank. So what we have here is the, the Sullivan's lot has the green dot up towards the top, um, at the intersection there. And that, that is the Sullivan's lot. The yellow dots represent other homes within that, call it sampling size, that exceed the 2,200 square foot, floor area or, or minimum, uh, or maximum floor, uh, area requirement. So what we have here, because these homes were largely constructed, uh, prior to that, uh, zoning standard, you have homes here that were built in the 20s, 30s, 40s. I believe the Sullivan's home dates back to the 20s. We, we have things that don't entirely fit. And we have propensity of the lots here that are narrower than are required within the R5. So, so you, you kind of have a, a situation where this is a, a unique outlier, if you will, the R5 zone where you have a lot of narrower lots and you have a lot of older homes. And a lot of them don't comply with all the setbacks in the lot area or the building area requirements. And if you look carefully at the homes on the corners, um, home across the street, uh, from the Sullivans on the opposite corner, you'll see, again, that's now the R10 district, which is larger homes, larger lots. But you'll see how it's situated toward the sidewalk. It's, it doesn't meet that, that frontage requirement. Same if you go to the bottom of the page, you have another home at the intersection there. Again, very close to the sidewalk, it doesn't meet the 25-foot setback requirement for front yard. And that's because this is something that's been kind of organic and growth and not a planned community. So when we look at neighborhood character, we have to understand that this neighborhood doesn't fit the R5 district, not only a lot size, but just in the general characteristics of the way it's been laid out.
Mr. Shannon, the only houses on this map that are in Fairhaven that don't comply with the minimum lot size are the two on the corner. Every other house in this street is 50 foot wide and in excess of 50 feet deep.
Oh, I'm, I'm not saying lot size. I'm saying lot, I'm sorry, it should be lot frontage in lot, lot width. They all comply with lot size. They all meet the minimum lot size. There's no question. But they don't, they don't comply with the minimum lot width.
Did those, did those lots change their dimension between the time Judge Lawson issued his decision and today?
None of the lots changed.
So, so what you're arguing is that Judge Lawson got it wrong. Not that there's a substantial change in circumstances.
I, I'm arguing neighborhood character at the moment and the.
Did that change?
No.
But I, but I wanna get to the underlying assertion. The underlying assertion is that the lots that we're looking at up and down Lake Avenue do not conform to typical R5 zoning. But that's incorrect. These are all conforming lots. Every one except for the corners because they're not 70.
And the, the quarter lots are, are not 70 and they do not need both front setback requirements.
But there's two of them. You're showing us 50 houses and saying that they don't conform.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the, look at the unique situation of the Sullivan house. It's a corner lot. It's constrained by two front yards. And that, and what, what have, you asked me to look at my different, uh, zoning, uh, alternatives and why this is a better zoning alternative because this is a lot on a corner with two front yards. It has a significantly constrained building envelope. So if we were to start fresh and to build it a conforming home on this lot, we would have something that's substantially out of character with the neighborhood.
I, 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 I accept that as to this lot. I don't accept that as to this neighborhood. I don't even understand the logic of it. And, and I think that that supports the idea of a setback variance. I don't understand how that gets to the square footage variance.
Well, again, and let's, let's take a step back. And, and Andy, I think that you said something that was important. And I know that we've been quoting Judge Lawson's, uh, Judge Lawson's opinion. And, and when Mike read it in, that, you know, Judge Lawson found that because there was nothing extraordinary having to do with the physical condition of the lot that causes the hardship, there was no hardship. But I think what this opinion fails to realize, and I think what this board can recognize is that there's three aspects. There's A, B, and C. And A is with regard to exceptional narrowness or shallowness of the property. B is exceptional topographic. And C are physical feat, uh, and C is exceptional situation affecting a specific piece of property. And if it ended there, then maybe Judge Lawson would have been correct. But the statute doesn't end with a specific piece of property. It says, or the structure is lawfully existing thereon.
You're arguing that we, you should, you're arguing that we should overrule Judge Lawson, not that something has changed.
No, I'm arguing that. No, what I'm saying is, is that what I'm arguing is, is that the change is with regard to the structure before you. And this gives the board the opportunity to make a finding again, similar to the last finding with regard to the statute. Yes. I'm saying that, that the, that the house itself is different enough than what you previously approved to allow this board to consider it again.
Mr. Andrew.
And I'm asking you to find in this particular one, I'm sorry, Mrs. Quigley, you didn't come up. It's hard on Zoom. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I wanted to ask Mike if it, to his knowledge, between Judge Lawson's decision and today, the double front yard setback on corners that we deal with so often before the board, was it just one front yard setback? I seem to recall in prior times, it was limited to the longer s- s- front yard or the, the shorter.
I, 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 I don't recall any change, Ms. Quigley, but I think the point is the lot hasn't changed.
They're both front yards, Pat. So they have, rather than having a narrower side yard, they've got a second front yard pushing them back further from both streets, which gives them a smaller building envelope.
Right. And with that's, and with that's, sorry.
The desirability of, the ability rather to build a brand new house on a corner, which would conform to the front yard setback on both streets, which could be different than what would have been the situation before Judge Lawson.
It's the same situation. The lot hasn't changed in 12 years. It's still 20 feet too narrow. It was 20 feet too narrow in 2008.
In the original plans, there was an indication that the front yard setback requirements applied only to one of those corner dimensions.
Well, and recall Judge Lawson approved our setback variant. The issue where he overturned us was on the habitable floor area.
He was okay with it, with an addition that went to 7.1 feet. He just wasn't okay with an addition that large that went to 7.1.
I understand. I'm really talking a, a little more nuanced than that in terms of comparing what's being proposed here with the alternative.
Right.
Deal with very often here. We were, in fact, another, I think a recent one we dealt with. On corner lots, it's often difficult to build a sustainable house accommodating both front yard setbacks on a corner.
So, but quickly, doesn't get, doesn't that get you to a, in this case, a second front yard variance? I mean, that doesn't get you to the square footage.
It could get you to a hardship in terms of having to accommodate a home that exists already on the lot as opposed to tearing it down. It just could make the argument stronger in terms of trying to preserve the home that's there.
That's in our, that's in our resolution of approval, that the applicant was constrained to work around the structure as it existed on the property. Judge Lawson said he found nothing in the land that prohibited the applicant from conforming. He said, unlike the Lang case, this property is not undersized. We can disagree, we can disagree with him.
And you have the ability, that's the whole point is you have the ability to render a decision that disagrees with him. You're not bound by his decision.
No, 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 we can't, we, we can't, we can't overrule the judge and ignore his decision.
I'm not asking you to.
If, if the application is substantially, if it is not substantially similar and the board so finds, then it can proceed on the merits.
Right.
Mr. Crimco, I wanna ask you a question about race judicata.
Yes.
50 feet smaller than what the board previously approved based on the original plans. If you came to us with an application that was 50 feet more larger than what was originally there, do you hold the same opinion that this board would not be acting contrary to the court's decision to approve an application that would be larger?
Um, I need to understand the question. Say it one more time.
The argument is that the new plans are substantially different such that we shouldn't be barred by race judicata. And we should further not be restrained by the court's order. That's your argument. What I'm asking.
No, that isn't my argument. I wasn't saying that you're not constrained by the court's order. What I'm saying is that court order applied to the case that was before them and based on the proof. If we overcome raised judicata, you're looking at this afresh based on the proofs that are before you.
Right. And so that's my question. You could overcome raised judicata by proposing to build something bigger. Do you think that the board could just as easily? Do you think that the board could just as easily find in favor of an application for a larger house contrary to Judge Lawson's decision?
If the proof supported it.
Okay.
But I cer- I I certainly think that to, i- if the board were to do that, that would, let me, let me, let me take a step back to what you said, because now, now it's sinking in what you're asking me. I think that to approve something even larger in an effort just to overcome raised judicata, to say it's different. I think you're exacerbating the issue that was addressed the first time around. And I think it flies in the face of the court's decision, I think that if you make it a smaller house and you discover that the original decision was based on some mistakes of fact. And now you have the correct information before you and you make that decision based on the accurate statements of fact. I think that you can make an independent decision.
I I I agree with that analysis, the problem I have with Judge Lawson's decision is he was not bothered by the extent to which we went over. We were bothered by the idea that you had to go over at all.
Right, and I, and I, and I understand that, and what I was getting to was, I think that that decision missed a very key point. And this gives us the appetite not to overturn that, but to clarify a very key point that doesn't appear to have made it into that decision. That it's not just a hardship because it's based on, that a hardship is not solely based on the lot configuration or the compliance of the lot with the underlying zoning. The statute itself indicates that the hardship can also be based upon exceptional circumstances relating to the structure existing. One more thing.
It's in our resolution.
Our resolution, the basis that was why we approved it.
It's in the resolution.
So, and again, one more thing that, so, again, but that wasn't, that doesn't go against the judge's decision, because the judge is saying you can't do it based on this. And perhaps it's possible that the judge may have missed the more salient point.
That's what the, that's what, that's what the appellate division is for, if somebody disagrees with the court, the question is whether.
I understand that.
Whether there's been a substantial change, not, not did he get it wrong, you know?
And again, you're you're conflating the two things. The first question is, is there a substantial change? And the applicant's position is the fifty square feet plus the configuration of the building itself plus the mistakes of fact before the board is substantial enough change to bring this back to the board to overcome raised judicata. If the board agrees that raised judicata has been overcome. Then the question is, did we make our proofs in this case, which is a new case, sufficient to grant the variance?
I just think we're replowing the ground and that's, that's fine, that's okay. I just, I just, what I suggest we shouldn't be doing is essentially doing a legal argument about whether the judge was right or wrong and whether he pro- properly applied the municipal land use law. The question is whether or not there's a substantial change and that's for the board to decide.
Okay, a- and I'm, and I apologize, Mike, but I was just trying to address your, your board chair's concern where he keeps bringing, mixing the proofs of what we're doing here versus the proofs in the first case. And the question is, is this substantially different? Yes, I think that all of the factors combined, while the actual number in the resolution is only fifty square feet different from what we're proposing now. I think when looked in its entirety as to the volume of the house shrinking. That the actual uh house itself shrunk and it was a mistaken uh mistaken number, I think that it has sufficiently changed. And I think that if the board agrees with that, then they can look at these issues effectively anew.
I, so I feel, I don't feel unconstrained by merely determining that it is different enough to not be barred by raised judicata.
May I ask you a question then?
Sure.
To that end, so then for every application that's come before you for an a a variance for maximum habitable square footage. Have you applied Judge Lawson's decision in that? Have you said every single time, well, in two thousand and eight, a judge overturned us, so now we can't grant them anymore?
I've already.
Ev- every application rises and falls on its own.
Correct, and that's my point.
And we, right, and the law of this case are the facts in this record. And what the board at some point is likely going to have to determine is whether or not there's been a substantial change, whether this application is substantially similar to the prior one or not.
Correct, and if the board determines that there, it is substantially different or it's not substantially the same, to quote the the language of the law. Then I think that the board is not constrained by Judge Lawson's decision on the former case anymore than they would be on any application that comes before them.
And and I don't disagree with you, I think the chairman's point is Judge Lawson was not talking about the degree of the deviation. He seemed to be indicating that there was no proof to deviate at all. Before you get to the negative criteria, he was arguing that the applicant didn't make out the positive criteria because it wasn't rooted in the land, you can disagree, I think the board disagreed because the board approved it. But that's, I think that's where Mr. Leader keeps bringing the focus, but I think we're replowing the same ground over and over again.
Right, and I, and I understand what the point is, but I think that the board doesn't have to make the decision. I I haven't seen any raised judicata litigation, any raised judicata cases that uh say raised judicata applies because the arguments are the same. Raised judi- so the what the judge decided it on is not relevant as to whether or not this is raised judicata before the board. The question before this board is, is the application before you tonight substantially different irrespective of Judge Lawson's holding?
Uh, Ms. Krimko, if that's all we have to decide tonight. Then the answer to the question of fifty square feet more and reconfigured should be as easily approvable by this board as fifty feet less, and I think everybody knows that that certainly doesn't feel right. And I'm struck, I'm struggling with how to reconcile what's being proposed against the decision which said that even, whatever the record was, that there wasn't enough of a basis on which to grant a deviation.
Uh again, you're conflating the issue of it, is this the same application before the board with the reasons the board, or the reasons the judge reversed to? They are two separate issues, and again, it's not fifty square feet. Let me, let me give you a different example. Let's say that the board approved twenty-three hundred square feet, okay? And the house that was shown on the plans before you was really only twenty-one hundred square feet. And that was a mistake, again, it was a mistake, and you thought you were approving twenty-three hundred square feet. And then when we discovered what it was, and we discovered that it was actually twenty-one hundred square feet. But now we wanted to go up to the twenty, we wanted to have a difference, so we came back in for twenty-three fifty. So you have the existing house, so you're really adding two hundred and fifty feet to the structure that was approved. Just based on the numbers, the math being messed up. That's very different than coming in for a house that's more than two hundred square feet smaller than what you thought you were proving, forgetting what the actual number is.
Wouldn't that argument, wouldn't that argument be stronger if the board had actually denied the application? Because it was looking at a schematic of a house that it thought was going to loom over the property and look much larger, but the board approved it in this case.
I understand that, Mike, but all I'm saying is the mistake was made and it was different. And so when we come down to it, the house that's being presented is not is fifty square feet on paper and mathematics. But in actuality, as drawn, is a volume that is much, much smaller.
But we don't approve the plans.
Well.
We approve the variance based on.
Based on the plans, and and if the variance.
So the variance.
No, if if the variance was based on a mistake of fact. Then you didn't approve that variance because the plant, the, your, your resolution specifically is approving a set of plans. And it's based on a mistake of fact.
No, specifically approving a number.
Which is.
Variance, based on the plans.
Based on the plans, you can't bifurcate the two, you can't. Otherwise, there'd be no reason to have plans, you would just come in and say, okay, this is the number I want.
And and if you could make your proof.
Anybody appealed Judge Lawson's opinion, it feels like we're going, why wasn't this appealed?
I can't answer that.
I can answer. Would you like to hear? Um, so, this was twelve years ago, um, we got his opinion. My son was five months old at the time and we were in the hospital. He had some significant uh medical issues. Um, at the time, I couldn't focus on this. Those medical issues lasted for between three and four years, um, causing me to have to leave the job that I had at the time to focus a hundred percent on my son. Um, so I couldn't for three, four years, all I did was kind of focus on the health issues that he had, getting him back to where he was. So I just, I couldn't do it physically, that's why.
Mr. Krimko, to Mr. Jenna, then.
No, he did not. Andy, would you like to finish?
I'd like to. Okay, so, again, where where we were at this point was uh in terms of the discussion of the hardship related to the lot. And and this is all kind of building in terms of the different alternatives that we may have to to work with this lot. So we do have an existing structure on this lot. It's, it's, it's been approved, it's existing, and it's very much in character with the neighborhood, with the context of the neighborhood, the ages. If we were to demolish this house, we would have a building envelope that would be significantly restricted and would result in a home that would be significantly out of character with the neighborhood. So we do have that constraint, and that constraint is related to the the configuration of the lot. The fact that it doesn't meet the sufficient lot width and the fact that it has two frontages. And then couple that with an existing home on the property that deviates from the building envelope. We now, we now have to deal with a set of circumstances, and these are unique circumstances to the lot. And we look at zoning alternatives, we have to understand all those constraints on the lot. So we get, we get to what are our zoning alternatives, and and we discussed what's a better zoning alternative here. So there's knock down, build new, which to build conforming wouldn't, would be out of character and contrary to the points of your master plan and reexamination. And we have the rebuild or add on to or work with what we have. We have a building here that's been in context within this neighborhood for close to a hundred years. Uh, we have a footprint that's been established. And we have a configuration within the home with a central staircase that constrains how and where additions can go within the property. What was left, and I think Mr. uh Karud is uh indicated the same, is really the place to go was out to the back, that's, that was the logical point to do any type of addition. So the first floor was expanded to the back and and in in a manner that was consistent with the setback along the secondary street frontage, and yes, the board did grant that and the judge upheld that that variance. So it went straight back first floor, and now, now we're asking for relief to add to the second floor. Uh, in order to do that, what, to to create a room within that configuration and the restrictions of the footprint and the configure, and the stairwell in the house. We would have to once again go out back. We have a home that's currently nineteen hundred and thirty-eight square feet. What we're proposing is two thousand three hundred and twenty-eight, where two thousand two hundred and twenty would be permitted within the R five. So we are asking for relief for a hundred and twenty-eight square feet deviation from what the maximum habitable floor area would be. I'd argue that it's not out of character with the neighborhood, again, character is important in terms of reconciliation with your master plan, which we need to do is to see variants really. And and now what we have is because of the configuration of the home, because of the way the house is situated on the lot. Um, going back, in order to create a master bedroom suite that meets somewhat modern standards. We are, we do necessarily have to exceed what would be maximum habitable square footage. Could it be done smaller, yes or no, yes? Uh, it maybe, would it be uh consistent with what we're trying to accomplish here in terms of an additional bedroom habitable space and creation of a home with modern standards? Anthony told you, if we were to build new and we had a a reasonable building envelope, a twenty-two hundred square foot house could be configured with four bedrooms, probably two and a half bathrooms. Uh, but unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of being able to do that. I'd also argue that I think it would be unreasonable, this is one of the tests within the C variants. Uh, and one of the points within the municipal land use law of the inefficiency of of knocking down an existing structure that is has been well maintained, has been renovated in the past and fits well into the neighborhood in order just to accommodate essentially a a five percent deviation in maximum habitable square footage. The lot itself is oversized, it certainly can accommodate it by all other measures of whether the home is oversized for the slot, and keeping in mind the maximum habitable square footage was put in place because of concerns related to putting homes that were out of character with the neighborhood or too large for the neighborhood. You have several controls within your ordinance that do that. That includes impervious coverage, building coverage, building height. Uh, and that also includes uh the maximum habitable square footage. We are compliant in terms of height, we are compliant in terms of the building coverage. And and by all other respects, what we are deviating here is the maximum uh built habitable square footage. And in a minor amount, the lot is essentially seven point ones uh percent larger than the zone requires. The addition we're putting here is five percent larger, so if we're looking at scaling the home to a lot, and I know that's not how Fair Haven does it, that's an argument that I've reserved in Rumson on these type of cases before, but but it's something that relates to it, and we're not proposing something that's significantly oversized or out of character. And I believe that map that I showed you before is that there are other homes within a neighborhood that slightly exceed that same maximum habitable square footage. Therefore, it's not something that's going to be noticed or something that'll create a negative impact upon the neighborhood. Um, Jen, there's a photo of the Sullivan residence that I had given you as.
Yep.
Might be good to put that up.
Yeah, I just want to get the right one, this is lot fifteen.
Well, Ms. Krimko's looking for that.
Eight, five.
Six, A six, and Mr. Jenna, do you take the photograph?
Uh, it was taken by my associate.
Okay, do you know when it was taken?
Uh, yes, the photo date is February third, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, and you've been.
And I have to apologize, the square footage on that is incorrect. It says two thousand three hundred seventy-six, that's two thousand three hundred twenty-eight. Is the correct proposed square footage.
Uh, I'm sorry, could you give me that again, Mr. Jenna?
So on that photograph, when it pops up, there's a line that says proposed two thousand three hundred and seventy-six square feet. That number is incorrect, the proposed, the number should be two thousand three hundred and twenty-eight. It doesn't reflect the existing home, the existing home is one thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight square feet.
Okay, um, so it's just, it's a typographical error, it says.
It was a typo, actually what they did was they picked up the former application when they typed it in and by the time we submitted and collected, it was already within your.
All right, uh, but you've, you've been to the property, so the photograph continues to fairly.
To the property as well, this is photographed by my associate, we dated it, uh, and this is the, the Sullivan home.
Okay, and it fairly and accurately depicts the current conditions of the property.
Correct.
Thank you, A dash six, please.
Andy.
Yes, Jeffrey, you putting it up or?
It is, oh, I might, you know what, my, I don't know, I, if you knew how many times I've done that in the coronavirus pandemic, I'm staring at it on my screen and I, on my other screen, and I think you guys can see.
There it is.
I hear it is, sorry about that.
Okay, and and I think it's important to 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 look at the home and to understand the character of the neighborhood. Because this is, this is a home that's almost a hundred years old. But you see, it's meticulously maintained, very much in character with what's uh within this neighborhood in Fairhaven. Um, quite frankly, uh, wo- worthy of heaping within the neighborhood because of the fabric that it, that this neighborhood maintains. This is a neighborhood largely of homes that are of the same genre, of the same appeal, same architectural character. Again, it's, it's something that developed organically. Um, and your, your master plan for now, uh, almost twenty years has cited concern regarding tear downs and infill construction, so we have an opportunity here to work with an existing structure and make it habitable for a normal family, a four bedroom, two and a half. to work with an existing structure and make it habitable for a normal family, a four bedroom, two and a half bath home. It is not something unreasonable on a 7,500 square foot lot. Certainly, we are asking for a relief of about 5% deviation in terms of the square footage. But again, I think the benefit to that, and we'll go to the purpose of the municipal land use law, because these are really public benefits. One is promoting a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques. That's I under the MLU. And what we're talking about here in terms of desirable visual environment is the context of the neighborhood, something that is near and dear to Fairhaven. We are not proposing something new, something modern. We are proposing to work with an existing home and make it livable. So you can see the notch there behind the trees where the addition will go. There's the one story addition to the back. The addition will go to the onto the second floor directly straight back. It'll square off the house, if you will. But again, it's something that is consistent with the character, something that your master plan seeks to create a context with and to maintain within your neighborhood. Another point within the MLU, again, that goes to public benefit is item M, which is to encourage coordination in various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development into the more efficient use of land. So when we look at all the zoning alternatives, we talked about knock down, rebuild. Not only would that create something out of character, but that would be an inefficient use of resources. You would create substantial debris from the demolition. You would build new, you create new construction debris. This is the addition to this home to create livable space is actually very efficient and does lessen the cost of the development for the homeowner and create something that will have lesser of an impact overall on the general public. So when we reconcile with the municipal land use law, which is something we need to do for C variance relief, those are two points that certainly are furthered by this application. So now going to the positive criteria within the C1, because you know, there are three points to the C1 relief. That as it relates to a specific piece of property, and it does, that the purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced. Mentioned to that, too, that the benefits of deviation would outweigh any detriment. So again, the benefits here are to create livable space to maintain an existing home within the neighborhood that's already with, developed to the character of the neighborhood. And those are substantial. Those are substantial benefits in doing this. We're not creating something that will be a McMansion. It's not going to be oversized. There are other homes within the neighborhood that deviate as much if not more than this home would. It's not going to be out of character. And we're maintaining something that has been here for almost 100 years. I would say that's a significant benefit of this application. We turn to the negative criteria, that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. So let's look at the detriments to the public good. What are the nuisances that would be created by this slight deviation? 5% more floor area. Are we creating more trash? Are we creating more traffic? Are we creating more noise? Are we creating a drainage issue? We're not doing any of that. What we're doing is creating livable space, a habitable master bedroom for a family with children and wanting some guest space and wanting to make a home within a 2,300 and change envelope that's livable by modern standards. There is no significant detrimental impact. And when we look at the impact upon the neighbors in terms of light air and open space, the addition will be within the permitted height. It will go straight back to the setback. We're not encroaching into that front yard setback that's been established along the property line and that second street frontage. And quite frankly, as you can see with the trees, it's going to be fairly well screened. I don't see any detrimental impact to do that. And frankly, I think when that addition's done, no one will be able to say, wow, that house is 128 square foot too big. That is somewhat fairly diminished.
Andrew, let me ask you a question. So understanding that the judge found that they didn't meet the C1 criteria, in your opinion, under the C, so the C1 criteria is it's a hardship, you can't comply.
Correct.
Even assuming there was no hardship and you could comply, and you concede that you could comply, is it your testimony that under the C2 criteria, this is a better zoning alternative than compliance because it would mean you could keep a structure that had been there for 100 years as opposed to tearing it down? And you're keeping a structure that has helped create the character of this neighborhood as opposed to tearing it down and constructing a more conforming home that meets the floor air, that meets the habitable floor area, but it doesn't meet the character of the neighborhood?
Jennifer, that's exactly my point. Is the benefit here is we have a known, we have something that's attractive, well maintained with the character of the neighborhood. And we have an opportunity, quite frankly, to save it from the infill construction that's been the bane of the planning analysis in Fairhaven for 20 years and prompted this ordinance to begin with. This isn't something that's going to create an oversized home that will be out of character. It's a modest addition. The deviation is modest. It creates livable space while maintaining the character of neighborhood. And I think that's a significant point in the balance test.
So even understanding that even understanding that we believe that we do meet the C1 criteria, in your opinion, this could be granted under either criteria, the C1 or the C2?
I believe so. Yes, that's my opinion.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Jen?
No, Jen.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, that's the conclusion of my witnesses. I would just reserve the right to make a closing statement once the publics had an opportunity to ask questions and/or make comments.
Okay. Any board members have any further questions of the applicant or their experts before we go to the public? Seeing none, we're now going to go to the public. So if there are any members of the public that have any questions or comments with regard to the Sullivan application, please use the hand feature and our super duper moderator will bring you forward.
Nothing thus far. Oh, we got one. I'll bring in Mr. Singh. Mr. Singh, if you can put your audio on or video, thank you.
Mr. Singh, if you give us your full name, spell your last, and you're at us for the record, please?
Sure, Michael. It's Richard Singh, S-I-N-G-H. First name is Richard. I'm at 15 Glen Place in Fairhaven.
And I'm going to swear in. So you do swear testimony to give the board to be the truth, all truth, and nothing but truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I would just say that as a neighbor to the Sullivans adjacent to their property, I agree with most of Mr. Jen's points that he made. I don't think this is anything unreasonable or inconsistent with the neighborhood itself. I think it's a modest addition. And the variance that is being asked for before this board, I think obviously, you know, not speaking to the legal arguments that the board has to consider, that this is probably something that the board has granted many times before for a similar footprint and a similar hall. That being said, I don't see any neighborhood detriments. I don't see any obtrusive elements to this. I'm very much in support of this application that's before the board tonight.
Never a truer statement than this board has approved similar applications before, indeed. You have any questions, Ms. Crimco, Mr. Singh?
No, I don't.
Thanks, Mr. Singh.
Thank you, Todd.
Anyone else from the public? Questions or comments? Please use your raise your hand.
We do have one more. I'm going to see if I can't get Mr. Singh back to attendee first. He keeps jumping around on me here.
I actually see two more super duper moderator, Joe.
Yep, okay.
How do you see them? I don't see them.
If you click on participants and then attendees.
I'm going to bring in Mike S.
Jen can see more than I can see.
No, no, no. On the bottom of the screen, Todd, if you click on the participants.
Yeah.
It calls up on the right side of your screen a list called panelists and attendees. When you click on the attendees one, it shows like Beverly Lawrence has her hand up.
You're absolutely right. It does. Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
See, Todd, you could do this.
We have an assistant moderator in the making here, I think.
Not super duper yet, so not to worry, Joe.
Why? That's why I said assistant.
Yeah.
Okay, ma'am, would you give us your full name, spell your last, and you're at us for the record, please?
Please unmute first, unmute your PC. There you go.
I think you're still muted.
Lower, there you go.
There you go.
So if you give us your full names, spell your last, and you're at us for the record, please?
My name is Beatrice Senna. I live at 39 Lake Avenue.
Okay.
B-E-A-T-R-I-C-E-S-N-A.
Okay, and you do swear testimony to give the board to be the truth, all truth, and nothing but truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I live at the property immediately adjacent to the Sullivan residence on Glen Place. I'm in the R10 zone. Every morning, my two eyes look out at that home more than anyone in this town. The first thing I look at when I wake up, there is no home that deserves this variance more than that home in my eyes, because that's what I look at every day. It's a smile to my face to look over at what they've done and what they plan to do. But right now, it looks almost like a seven-year-old child with a tooth missing. It looks asymmetrical because there's a gap on that second floor above that addition. It would please me to no end to see that evened out. I'm a great admirer of history. I love the architecture in our neighborhood. And my husband and I have actually considered reconfiguring our rooms so that our kitchen table in the morning would look out at the Sullivan's residence. So I want to thank everyone for their consideration of past judgments. But this is now, and this is a new application. And I think it's tasteful, and I hope you will sincerely consider granting this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Senna. Anything? Jen?
No, no, no.
I see we have now. I can't see. We have additional hands raised.
We've got Beverly Lawrence coming in.
Ms. Lawrence, you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Ma'am, if you'd give us your full names, spell your last, and you're at us for the record, please?
Beverly Lawrence, L-A-W-R-E-N-C-E, 48 Lake Avenue, and of course, Fairhaven.
And I'm going to swear in. You do swear testimony to give the board to be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
I live across the street from this gorgeous older home, and this addition will only enhance the beauty. I just worry that if this is not granted, the Sullivans could move and the house could be torn down, and a new modern house ugly could be built, and they could even paint it shocking pink. Does the zoning board consider what could replace this beautiful house? The Sullivans keep this house immaculate, being on a corner lot, and it requires a lot of extra work because they've got snow on either side and all the sidewalks and and grass. And it's just lovely the way they maintain it. And I would love to see them have their addition. So please grant it. Does the zoning board ever consider what could replace something as lovely as this?
Sure.
That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Anything, Ms. Crimco?
No, thank you.
We have, I believe, one more. Colette coming in.
Yes, good evening. Actually, it came in as my wife, Colette Thompson, but her husband, Rob Thompson. I live at 22 Glen Place. We bought up against Dennis and Kathy's house. Our driveway is almost adjoin. There is a small strip of vegetation between us.
Mr. Thompson, I'm just going to swear in, please. If you'd raise your right hand. You do swear testimony to give the board to be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I certainly do.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Dennis and Kathy, wonderful neighbors, see nothing wrong with this addition. We've been on this call now, the Zoom meeting, for about two and a half hours to discuss a 50-square-foot variance, I believe. And yes, certainly being one of their closest neighbors would be very, very disappointed and upset if they couldn't get this variance and decided to sell their property and have a developer come in, as so many other homes in the area have done. I believe we have 10 new homes within a block and a half square square that maxed out their square footage. I see nothing wrong with this addition to their home. I would love to keep them as neighbors. We have a wonderful little enclave here. And I certainly hope the board sees fit to do so. And we go on living our wonderful lives on Glen Place. And I thank you for your time, and I hope you see in favor of the Sullivans.
Thank you.
No, no, no questions.
Anyone else from the public have any questions or comments regarding the Sullivan application? Jen, you have anything closing?
Just very briefly, because I think we've argued all of this as much as we could. I think that the applicant has made its position very clear that we think that there is enough of the change to achieve a substantial difference such that raised judicata doesn't apply. Without raised judicata applying and this being a new application, I think the testimony before you clearly demonstrates that first, there is a hardship variance in that we have an existing historic home, albeit in a nonhistoric district, that's configuration is limiting the ability to add the master bedroom without exceeding the cap. And that it could be done in a way without any detriment to the public good. However, even putting aside that argument, I think that the neighbors argued it even better than we did or or our planner did in that this is by far not only the professional planner's opinion, but the neighborhood's opinion that the grant of this variance would qualify under C2 and that it is a better zoning alternative than compliance. And what that means is, is that first, it has to further a purpose of the municipal land use law. And it certainly furthers purposes I promoting a desired visual environment and keeping it compatible with the character of the neighborhood and to lessen the cost of such development by allowing the adaptation of an existing structure as opposed to knocking it down and starting it new. And you heard it from the neighbors themselves that tearing down this house and putting a conforming 2,200-square-foot house would have far more of a negative impact on this neighborhood than the modest addition that's being proposed here. So in light of all of the testimony that's before you, we've taken up a lot of your time already, so I'm not going to go through and summarize it. I think that the applicant has demonstrated through this application that they met the positive and the negative criteria to legally justify the grant of a variance that has the full support of the neighborhood. Thank you for your time and your indulgence.
Thanks, Ms. Crimco. Okay, more discussion.
I have a question for Mr. Irene. To the extent we can get past the threshold raised judicata issue, to what extent are we bound by the prior court's holding?
Well, it's, it's, it's part of the law of the case.
Yeah, but if we are, if we get past raised judicata, aren't we in a position where we're supposed to look at this on its merits and these facts that have been presented rather than facts that were presented previously?
I don't necessarily disagree with that. I would suggest that other cases involving raised judicata would be easier for the board to handle. For instance, you have a situation where there are four variances and it's denied. And then an applicant comes back and is suggesting three or two. The, one of the difficulties here, and I think you heard that in some of the questions or comments from Chairman Leader, dealt with Judge Lawson's decision being not so much the scope of the deviation, but whether any deviation on the circumstances at issue should have been approved, and I leave that to you to deal with as you see fit.
I, I don't know how to proceed with this. I agree with all of the testimony, Mr. Jen's testimony, I agree with Ms. Krimko's testimony. And I don't, I'm pretty sure the same arguments were made in two thousand and seven. I didn't read the entire transcript. Listen, we've approved a ton of these in the past where, yes, I never advocate for the tearing down of a house and always, you know, it's, it is, it's a minimal overage on a lot that's a little too narrow and means saving that house and making it better for the family and other families and the neighborhood. I mean, it wasn't too many years ago that they, they knocked out a bunch of those houses around the corner on Glen Place and built those houses on the pond. Okay, very different look than what was there, and it's, you know, but we want to maintain this older neighborhood. I just don't know how to handle it as, as Mr. Ludman just brought up. Firstly, I think the judge was wrong. I think we are, first, I think this is substantially enough different from the case that was put forth. However, the wording in the, in the opinion was, as Mr. Leader said, just a number. It's any, any overage is too much.
If, if I may.
That's what I'm having trouble with.
If that was. I'm sorry. If we get beyond the rest judicata, Mike, maybe this is for you. When you say it's the law of the case, I take it you're referring to the reasoning employed by Judge Lawson that really no, he found that no overage was sustainable under the facts presented in the first application. But if we, if we decide that rest judicata does not prohibit us from considering the application, then aren't we also bound by our duty as zoning board members?
Yes.
Look at the totality of the application with fresh eyes, because Judge Lawson, remember, is looking at, and I can't, you know, speak for him back then, but he's looking at a situation where this was a pretty big imposing extension that was being proposed, including the, you know, back, back off the, the bedroom. I think that if it's substantially different enough to consider the application, then our responsibilities as zoning board members is to consider it independently of the specific reasoning that he applied.
Was there a question?
Yeah.
Can we make that assumption, Mrs. Krimko? I'd love to.
Let's. Let's assume rest judicata.
Ms. Krimko, I'm gonna ask you to mute, please.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Let's just assume that rest judicata doesn't apply. Then what are we left with? Don't we have to just consider the application anew?
I, I think you would, yes, and that's generally the way it's done. And I think the reservations that some of the board members have had is that last time around, it was how many square feet over? Hundred and forty-one or hundred and forty-seven, and now it's forty-eight square foot less. So if you believe that that's substantially different, you believe that that entitles you to view it entirely. Again, you know, you've been provided with the opinion, you've been provided with the resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but it's entirely up to the board how you wish to proceed.
Hold on a second. I just want to clarify one point, because clearly the addition in the back is four feet short of what it was originally approved, and the new addition is at least six feet. Whatever those numbers are, it's not what it reflects on those resolutions. And that's been testified to by Mr. Condors. And so I, I do think it's different than just that fifty square feet.
Right.
I, I think that too, and I, I think when it was reviewed in two thousand and eight or whenever it was, you know, it was the original house, I think, was around fourteen seventy-five. It went for approval to twenty-three seventy-six. Obviously, there's been work done in between, and I think if they took that plan, built a portion of it as it was approved at that time and didn't do the whole thing because they couldn't go over the cap, I think that would be a different scenario. But I think the fact that they built something that was different than what was approved, and now they've got a new application. I was initially honestly focusing on kind of that forty-eight square foot difference, and it seems really de minimis and kind of hard to get there, but I think the testimony we heard is that this was a different house at the time, and now it's something different again, and so it's a new proposal. And to me, I was initially uncomfortable, but I, I think I'm getting past that raised judicata issue. So then just turning to the merits, you know, I think you have to look at, I, I, I do, and I think many of, many of us have said this. The opinion, I think, we all or most of us probably disagree with, and I think the flaw in the opinion, to me at least, is that it, it, it's not really presenting facts that were presented here today, particularly around zoning alternatives. And it seems to focus on the fact that the board didn't really consider a lot of zoning alternatives. It just talks about a reasonable home for reasonable people, which really, you know, I think is supporting the end holding. But the zoning alternatives that were presented here today, really especially focusing on like tearing down, building new, what can you really do with this type of property? I know it's in the resolution, but it didn't really appear as much in case or in the holding.
I'll weigh in a little bit. I, I'm struggling with the problem of how do you measure substantial and substantial difference? And I think to me, that's, that's the biggest problem is what, what is enough to be substantial and what isn't enough to be substantial? So I'm gonna try to put raised judicata aside and look at this on its own merits, because I can't make that determination on raised judicata. But on its own merits, I, you know, I, initially, I would say, gee, it's only a hundred and eight square feet, you know, difference, why can't they comply? But when you look at the whole thing and you look at the overall picture, I don't think it's an unreasonable addition. And based on the merits of the case, I, I think it's something that we've approved in the past. The lot is a little larger than what you would expect. The floor area ratio is still reasonable and under what is expected. And I, I don't have a problem with the, with the addition as it's presented.
I don't have a lot to, that's what was already mentioned by my fellow board members. It just seemed to be unfair that the applicant would be barred from coming in with any application that would be anywhere over the cap. It just doesn't seem to be some elementally fair. This is definitely different enough for my satisfaction. It's a new application. I've heard from Mr. Condors why this would be impossible to bring in under twenty-two-hundred. You lose another bedroom. It just wouldn't make any sense. It's a reasonable application. Were it not for this raised judicata issue, this would have been done an hour ago. It's something we see all the time in town. You wouldn't want to build a conforming house in this lot. It would be a disaster. This is a very reasonable application, and I'm all for it.
I'm just kind of curious, I mean, like what the other, if anyone has a different view, because I, I think this is a really tough one, to be honest with you. Like, that's why we're all struggling with this, because if we just looked at it independently, I think we'd you know, probably get there. It seems kind of familiar, and, and obviously the board approved something at least similar in terms of like overage and the cap, and I know there's arguments on the other side. I'm just kind of curious what others are thinking about it.
All right, it's time to call on people. What do you say, Mr. Ridgeway?
And thank you, Dr. Lawfer. Mr. Ryan and everybody. Yeah, I, I would agree with what was presented, as stated by Dr. Lawfer and Mr. Ryan. This is something that we see all the time. And I appreciate you laying that out for me, because I, you know, the whole conversation that the judge got it wrong. To be quite frankly, and, you know, it was like, well, well then why did somebody appeal? I understand personal conditions, so. Yeah, yeah, I think I would agree with Dr. Lawfer and Mark Ryan that on its merits and what was presented, you know, we, we go through this all the time. I think it's a good proposal. I've seen enough, enough changes in the, in reduction space, reduction of those closets, taking things out. We've spent all night on this, going back and forth, so I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Cancel, you're next.
Well, there's a lot here, and I will give an opinion, but I am glad I'm an alternate on this one. You know, this is something that we see all the time, and it is something that would be approved. You know, as somebody mentioned, this would have probably taken an hour. But there's the big but that's hanging out there, and, you know, are these changes substantial enough? You know, reducing a couple of, you know, you know, reducing a square foot, but it's not by that tremendous of amount. And, you know, you go back to the decision of the judge where, you know, they, they, they say that there's no justification for this. You know, they can, you know, accomplish what they want within the structures that we have in place, so that, that's the huge challenge. You know, I, I can't say even if it meets, you know, the, 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 the standards for raised judicata at this point. You know, if this, if this was just a standalone proposal in front of this board without that hanging over it, it would be a no-brainer. I support everything they are trying to do. But, you know, there is a judgment hanging out there that, you know, kicked this back the last time, and I don't think that, you know, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure that it is that entirely different to warrant us revisiting it. And again, I am glad that I am an alternate on this one, because this is a really tough one.
Mr. Stewart, adding.
I'm with Mr. Cancel. It's, it's an interesting place to be as an alternate as opposed to someone's gonna be voting on this. I heard the first application. Honestly, don't recall how I voted on it. But yes, we do see things like this all the time, and yes, we do approve them all the time. But we were reversed on this specifically, this property. And when you consider if there's a substantial enough difference, I, I think you gotta look at the fact that in, in the reversal, no, no amount of difference other than complying was substantial enough in that opinion. And honestly, listening to what was presented tonight and thinking back on what was presented before and looking at the resolution that, that Mike wrote the last time around, I wonder is the resolution this time around, if we get past the raised judicata issue, is the resolution this time around going to look substantially different from the resolution that was written the last time around? And, and if not, then is there really a substantial difference? And I think the last thing to, to consider is a lot of times, and then I know it was asked tonight in a different context, can you build a conforming house? And the answer is that, yes, they did and lived in it for ten years. So I, I don't know. The, the, that's, those are my opinions on it. I'm not voting on it, but you know, I just, hopefully that gives people something to think about. That's, that's all I have at the moment, though.
Thanks, Al. I just want to compliment the board. I think that this has obviously been a long hearing. I think this is a very, very, very challenging issue. I think we've heard a lot about the case law, but I don't know that any of those cases involve an actual court decision. And I think it's difficult because you're looking at an application that was approved originally, and everybody's correct when they say that this is the kind of thing that we approve regularly for all the reasons that we approved it the first time. We can stipulate that Dennis and Kathy are fantastic residents of Fairhaven. They're super people. Their house is tight. They worked really, really hard to keep it tight. The neighbors came out. I mean, that's all great stuff. Unfortunately, that's not what I'm caught up in at all. I'm voting last, and I expect that I will abstain because I'm struggling with how to filter this through the court's order. I thought that Ms. Krimko did a very nice job. Most attorneys that will come and present this tonight would not have been able to do that. Mr. Jano is an excellent planner. He has a terrific reputation. He put on the case that should have been put on in oh-seven or oh-eight, whatever it was. I get it. The integrity of this board is the most important thing to me. And we have denied things before that we really would have liked to have supported because we just couldn't do it. But what I love about where we are is that every one of you have given this a fair shot, and you have truly listened. And I've heard from everybody a lot of support for what this is, because standing alone, we do this all the time. I'm not gonna vote first. I will likely abstain. There are seven votes. We have what? Do we have two C variances, Michael?
The only thing that I believe was discussed, Mr. Chairman, was the habitable floor. I assume that what they built, they built in accordance with the prior approval, although I suppose we're exacerbating vertically, Ms. Krimko, just nod. That side yard setback, she's nodding yes. So we have the habitable floor area on the table, and we have the vertical exacerbation of that side yard setback as a result of the proposed second floor.
And arguably, that variance was, I, I see you, and I'll get to you. Arguably, that variance is granted before. Now, given that was on a different set of plans, I think there's clearly two variances, the side yard setback, the second front, and the total square footage cap. Elena, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, it's not a side yard, it's the front yard.
Second front.
It's a front yard variance of the side yard. That's all.
Vertical exacerbation via the second floor addition of the front yard?
Exactly.
Thank you.
So Mike, I want to ask a procedural question. It's a bare majority of the voting members, right?
There are C variances, so it's a simple majority.
What if you have three abstentions out of seven votes?
So if you have three in favor, three against, and one abstention, it fails. They have to get a majority.
Right, so, but the abstentions are eliminated, so if three people vote and two are in favor and one is against, it'll carry, notwithstanding the abstentions.
Three in favor, two against, one abstention, two abstentions?
Keep telling me, no, that, I, I got, I got what I need. The bare majority of whoever votes.
Do you vote on the raised judicata issue?
Go through that.
I assume that's what the board's gonna do.
That's a threshold issue, so somebody needs to make a motion with regard to raised judicata. Once that, if that motion carries, the next vote is to grant or deny the variances that are before us tonight. So unless anybody wants to have any further discussion, I think we're ready for a motion with regard to raised judicata.
I'd like to make a motion that raised judicata does not apply to prevent the board from considering the application before us tonight.
I'll second.
Quickly, second by Ludman. We're ready for a roll call when you're ready, Sandy.
Yeah, Nick Chesney.
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley. Mr. Ridgeway. Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Ludman.
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer.
Yes.
Mr. Leader.
Pat, get another motion.
Then I'll make the motion to approve the plan as submitted for the, the.
Let's, let's remember the problem we had with the plan last time. How, how about if you want to make a motion to approve, approving the variance relief?
I'm going to approve variance relief in the amount of 20. Can somebody help me with the number? I deleted it off my screen.
Twenty-three, twenty-eight, I think. Am I right?
Twenty-three, twenty-eight square footage and extension, uh, exacerbation of the front yard setback vertically at seven point one feet.
Who was the second?
Quigley.
Okay. Mr. Nick Chesney.
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Ludman.
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer.
Yes.
And Mr. Leader.
I'll abstain. Congratulations.
And I just want everyone to know that I'm here on my birthday and I could not have asked for a better birthday present. So thank you for the approval. Take care, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um, everyone, it is 10:06. Um, we have a meeting coming up in two weeks. We are going to be proceeding with our special. Uh, we have a couple of applications that are complete and have noticed. We have two matters left on the agenda for tonight. I'm going to ask for everybody's indulgence to try and do one more, at least to get one started. And I'm going to suggest that the McElduffs be brought forward quickly. And Mr. Irene, what I'm thinking is, um, that we, if they're, they're prepared to be heard in two weeks, they should be because they're prepared tonight, um, that we could push them to first on the agenda for the 20th.
Uh, that's fine, Mr. Chairman, but you may want to consider if you don't complete number two tonight, you can push McElduff to the next meeting, but you may want to complete number two at the next meeting if you don't complete it tonight.
You're always looking out for me. That's great.
Sometimes I, sometime, you know, even the blind squirrel sometimes stumbles across the chest, not Mr. Chairman.
What's certain is whatever I try and do will blow up in my face. That is much uncertain. Do we have, uh, they, they were here. I saw them. Did they drop off?
That's, that's, that's Mr. Akins matter. I believe he is present.
Got, um, I lost, oh, he's there.
Ryan's here.
No, what we want is the McEldra folks, correct?
Yeah, that's who we're looking for.
So if the McEldra folks can raise their hands, that would be great.
They're up. You already pulled them forward.
All right, good. Well, I'm, I'm so good. I'm ahead of myself.
So good.
Um, Joe is, uh, is Mr. Akins out also?
Yep.
Why don't we bring him in?
He's right coming in.
While we're doing, while we're doing that, Sandy, did you have a chance to check the notice materials on McElduff?
Uh, McElduff, yes, we're all good.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Can you hear me okay, Mr. Chairman?
I can.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, did you hear what we're talking about, Mark?
Yes, I've heard everything. Thank you.
Okay. Do you guys want to be on the 20th or do you want to be moved to our next regular meeting in June?
We'd like to be heard on the 20th if that works with the, the chair and the board's schedule.
So we already have two, but I did not commit to where they were going to be heard because I didn't know what was going to happen tonight. We don't know what's going to happen with the bungee application, which we're going to try and deal with now. So you, but you'll be first or second on the 20th.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Irene, anything further?
Yeah, we do, Mr. Chairman. We need to announce that the McElduff or McElduff? McElduff. Yes, thank you. The McElduff matter, 31 Heights Terrace is being carried to May 20, 2021 without the necessity of renotice. And Mr. Akins is going to give us a stipulation extending time, which the board has to act, Mr. Akins?
Yes, I will.
Can we take that motion, Mr. Chairman?
Let's do it. I gotta make that motion? I'm making that motion. Any second?
Second.
Chesney. Well, Leader, Chesney, roll call when you're ready, Sandy.
Mr. Nick Chesney.
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
I'm mute.
Yes.
Mr. Ludman.
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer.
Yes.
And Mr. Leader.
Yes.
So any parties mark your calendar accordingly. This matter is being carried to the May 20, 2021 meeting of the board. Same time via Zoom without the necessity of renotice. There'll be no further notice. Thank you.
May 20. Thank you all. Good evening.
Thank you.
Right.
All right. We're going to press on with the bungee matter, please.
And Mr. Chairman, this matter was listed in an earlier meeting of the board and it's my recollection and Sandy or someone else can correct me if I'm wrong, that we carried it without commencement to give the applicant an opportunity to perfect the notice only by serving the clerk of a municipality within 200 feet.
I, I apologize. I need a comfort break and I should have called for one, but I will be taking one whether everyone else needs one or not because I need one.
So, Mr. Chairman, why don't we take a five minute break and we'll go off and then we can all come back?
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Yeah, you want me to stop bringing in folks?
Yeah, please do that. We're waiting for Al's camera before we start, but we can bring them forward.
There it is.
Oh, shit. Is there anybody else relative to the bungee matter?
Mr. Bungee, is it just you and Mr. Scalise?
Yes, uh, just us two.
Terrific.
So we're going to swear him as Gable, our professional planner, raise your hand. You just want to testify testimony against the board to be truth, ultimate, not but truth?
I do.
Do we have completeness waivers on this one?
We do. We have usual three, uh, Monmouth County Planning Board, Freehold Soil Conservation District and the Monmouth County Health Department. And then we have three additional ones from the application guidelines, um, which includes the complete floor plans. The applicant requested a waiver, um, noting that the design has been approved, um, through permit. However, just not the front porch. Um, the applicant also requested a waiver from the zoning schedule, which must include habitable floor area and floor area ratio. They requested a waiver from those two requirements and also the location of the type and for the attic access as well, since there is no attic proposed.
Gable, can you answer the, what, can you explain the waiver about the habitable floor area and square footage? Just it's.
So in the, um, application guidelines, there, the requirement is for a zoning schedule that must include the habitable floor area and floor area ratio. And the applicant did provide a book chart, but the habitable floor area and the ratio was not included.
I see in your planning review, I see two, two asterisks next to both of those and I was just curious what those meant.
Just.
For the, for the ratio, I see it. Point one, non-existing, point two, six proposed.
Um, yeah, so the habitable floor area ratios were not included in the application. And I'm not, we might have calculated that based upon what was submitted on the drawings.
Got it.
So a- as I looked at this, it appears as though there's a substantial renovation going on, but nothing is being put before us other than the request for the variance for the porch. So while technically all those things are required, we're being asked not to look at them or touch them. And we're permitted to advance with regard to the porch, right? I mean, everything else just stays the same.
Correct.
So, so, so the applicant has requested a waiver, but if you're doing all these renovations and you have the plans, why were we unable to get this data?
Just before you proceed, did you guys do roll call again after returning? I didn't remember.
I don't think we did, Joe.
If, if we didn't, let's do it, please. Joe, you're the best.
Mr. Nick Chesney.
Here.
Mrs. Quigley.
Here.
Mr. Ridgway.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Ludman.
Here.
Dr. Lawfer.
Here.
Mr. Cancela.
Here.
Mr. Shiyavati.
Here.
Mr. Leader.
Present.
Thank you, Joe.
Anytime. So, so the question is, um, we, these are standard materials. You're doing a renovation. Why were we unable to get what we typically receive? You're still both on mute.
We allowed to speak or do we need to be sworn in first?
Well, it's, it's really we're into completeness, but I'll swear in. So when we, if we get to the merits, Mr. Scalise, give us your full name, spell your last year's address for the record, please.
Antonio Scalise, S-C-A-L-I-S-E, 494 Broadway in Long Branch, New Jersey.
I'm a swearing. You just want to testify testimony against the board to be truth, ultimate, not but truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I can provide that information. Um, I guess it was just the waiver maybe was asked because uh, that was already approved for the renovation. Um, we have a couple of items, uh, that we're looking for, uh, variances regarding the porch. But I can tell you that we are compliant with the FAR ratio, uh, which is required is 3220. And we have 3219. We purposely stayed under the ratio, uh, you know, under the requirement to not trigger a variance.
And Mr. Scalise, how familiar are you with the way we calculate square footage in Fairhaven? Have you, have you been before this board before?
Uh, if I have, it's been a long time. Uh, it was a few years ago. Um, I had the benefit and I almost want to apologize for being an architect, listening to that whole previous, uh, discussion you guys had and I really appreciate that whole thing. But, uh, it's basically calculated heating space. There's no credits. Um, I did another project that it, uh, should be getting approved, uh, where you're not allowed to take out stairways, things of that nature where we normally do that, uh, for square footage. So yes, I'm aware.
Okay. So I, look, again, we normally have it. It, it, it's a little suspect when we get it piecemeal, but the bottom line is the board's being asked to act only as to the porch. So we can have our discussion tonight, far as I'm concerned. Fortune, to the extent that there's an issue with regard to measurement or other issues, then that'll be an issue to come up down the road. But there's nothing before us tonight that is, uh, in any way tied to those numbers um, or any other variances where that would tie in. Anybody, anybody disagree with that? All right. Mr. Bunch, are you going to testify?
Um, yeah, I guess. Yes, that's fine.
All right. So, so let's both qualify Mr. Scalise with his professional, um, credentials and let's swear, Mr. Bunch, please.
Mr. Bunch, give us your full name, spell your last year's address for the record, please.
Uh, yes, Chris Bungee, E-U-N-G-E, um, Seven Hillside Place, Fairhaven.
I have a few, for butchering your name.
Oh, no, no one ever gets it right.
And if you raise, if you raise your right hand, so you just want to testify testimony against the board to be truth, ultimate, not but truth?
I do.
And Mr. Scalise, have you put your credentials on the record, please?
Sure. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New York, New Jersey and Pennsylvania. Uh, I've been in front of many boards in the state of New Jersey and I am a, uh, the chairman of the planning board in West Long Branch.
Any questions for Mr. Scalise as to his credentials or you accept them as an expert in the field of architecture?
Any problems? Good to go.
We had a set of plans, additions and alterations plans prepared by Antonio Scalise, AIA, six sheets dated October 2, 2020, revised through and including November 2, 2020. Is that the current set, Mr. Scalise?
Yes.
We'll mark that A dash one, please, Sandy. There was also a survey that was submitted prepared by Charles Surmont, S-U-R-M-O-N-T-E-P-E and PLS, April 4, 2019. The copy I had is unsigned and unsealed. Do we have a signed and sealed copy?
Yes, we do.
Great. That's the one we're going to mark as exhibit A dash two, please. And Mr. Mr. Bungee, correct?
Yep.
That survey from 2019 continues to fairly and accurately depict the conditions of the property?
We, we, uh, we moved the driveway, uh, from an earlier, uh, um, I guess, you know, fixed renovation.
Okay, but the current conditions are depicted on your.
Yes, yes.
On your plan, Mr. Scalise?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We're ready.
Um, yeah, no, I just wanted to introduce myself, Chris Bungee, you know, obviously live at Seven Hillside Place with my wife and two little boys, uh, grew up in the area my whole life, uh, you know, building our forever home. Young family, wanted to kind of complete the whole design with the, uh, front porch. So that's just, uh, I guess my story.
So you know, Mr. Scalise, do you want to take the board through what's existing, what's proposed and what the variance is required?
Sure. Um, thank you again for having us and hearing us. I know it's late. I'll try to be brief. Um, so there was an approval for building permits for, uh, renovation work, which I think was somewhat described in the engineer review letter. Um, and there were adding some, uh, I'm going to share my screen if that's okay. Can everybody see the site plan? Okay?
Yes.
All right. So, um, there was a renovation where, uh, we're doing a second story addition above. All right, so there was a renovation where we're doing a second-story addition above to add some bedrooms. And then there was some internal renovations on the first floor to kind of create a more open floor plan. As Mr. Bunge stated, the driveway did get changed from, it was on the left side of the property, which is the, Mr. Surmont's survey shows. But obviously, for our renovation, what we ended up doing, there were garage doors on the front, I mean, excuse me, on the rear of the building. We moved the garage doors to the front and just have a new driveway that is facing the garage doors. That was essentially the change with the driveway in that area. The, what we came before you tonight on is this, the front porch. So what I'm gonna try to do and do this quickly, actually, let me go, I have a S K one that's dated November ninth, Mr. Irene, should we make that A three?
Please.
Okay. This is the existing house, which I guess that one of the things they did early on was move the driveway as we're showing you here in this photo, in these photographs. The existing house, as it stands, is your typical Cape-style house, you know. Yeah, just a Cape style, I think, is the best way to describe it. Our renovation, which I will go back to this, shows. So you could see here on this front elevation where this portion above is the renovations we did to kind of create a little bit better headroom and some more additional space on the second floor, but to try to keep the design kind of quaint, if you will, and not do like a full two-story. The client really loves the character of the neighborhood and love the character of the house. So we were trying to maintain that kind of Cape vibe as much as possible with our expansion. When we did that first initial design with the second floor above, as shown here, without some kind of entry portico or just a small gable and porch, we kind of felt like the design was missing something and just felt, didn't feel right, it felt a little top-heavy. So this is where we proposed a new front porch, which basically we tried to keep it to the minimum possible. It's four feet from the face of the existing property. So just to show you on the site, from this edge here, we're looking to come out towards Hillside Place approximately four feet. I apologize, there's a slight discrepancy in our survey, in Mr. Surmont's survey. He calls out the existing corner here at twenty-four point six feet. And ours is showing at twenty-five. I think it may be a clerical error, meaning that I think our, the dimension in AutoCAD, I think rounded up is the only thing I can say why that happened. But basically, what we're looking to do is we are looking to come out from this face, which, if you go by Mr. Surmont's survey, is twenty-four point six feet, coming out four feet towards Hillside Place.
So I just want to be real clear, because that's a real small porch. You've got at least twelve-inch column shown, you're only gonna have three foot clear to get behind the columns, between the columns of the house. You're talking four feet from the furthest, most projection of that front porch.
Yeah, four feet, yeah, unfortunately, you're correct. I would love to come out further. If the board would see that we could be allowed to come out further, I'd have to talk to my client if they would want to do so. But really, the design, we tried to keep it as minimal as possible, because we knew we were exacerbating. Unfortunately, the main variance that we're here for that unfortunately we're exacerbating, which is the front yard setback, which is thirty feet. And we would be going to, I guess, technically, if you go per Mr. Surmont, it would be twenty point six feet is what we're asking for, which is approximately four feet off of that face. Mr. Bunge, if you want to, you know, chime in, if, you know, I feel like there's a possible opportunity to extend it further. I don't know if that's something you'd want to do.
That was not an invitation to extend it further. That was an effort to clarify exactly what we were being asked to do.
That is exactly what we were being asked to do, yes, Mr. Chairman.
What is the length of the covered porch, please?
Twenty-one feet.
Thank you.
Just want to clarify that the front yard setback showed on the survey is actually twenty-four point five feet to the front left corner there. The right corner is twenty-four point six, and the left corner is twenty-four point five.
That's fair. Yes.
And now I forgot what you said the length of the porch was. I'm sorry, Mr. Scalise.
Twenty-one feet.
Twenty-one feet, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, and we have a step. How high is the porch?
Uh, it's probably about sixteen inches off the ground, plus or minus. I don't know if I have that off the top of my head.
All right, and so you know from studying our ordinances that we measure our front yard setback to the first projection that exceeds, I think, six inches, Al would know for sure. So that front step is probably in your front yard setback, too. We should ping a measurement on that. I think that's what you're actually asking for, right?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. So if I want to take the furthest, the least dimension, which is twenty-four point five, it would be twenty-four point five minus five feet.
So just to clarify, what you're asking for is four feet, which gives you two different dimensions across the twenty-one feet, and a further exception for a particular step. How big is that step?
Say twelve inches.
We should call it sixteen.
Okay.
You should leave yourself, twelve's really tight.
I appreciate that, yes. So twenty-four point five, twenty-four point five minus four feet minus sixteen inches.
So, Mr. Scalise, on your photos, I assume you took all those photos, you took most of the houses in town. What were you gonna show us about the neighboring properties?
Yeah, I think all I wanted to show or kind of dictate is that we're trying to stay within the fabric of the community. I think what I really appreciate about my client's intentions of the design is to kind of maintain a Cape feel. They kind of know, you know, the scale of the house with the scale of the property. They're trying to just stay within that, and I think this is a really quaint neighborhood. And we're just showing that there are similar houses, similar language and context, and a lot of them have the front porch. Unfortunately, we, you know, we have a little bit of a hardship due to the existing non-conformity of the lot depth. So that's kind of a little bit of our hardship, and it's also a corner property. You kind of alluded to it in your previous application, which is kind of the hardship we're asking for. And the photos are there just to kind of show that we're trying to maintain the neighborhood.
The house exists right now, right?
Yes.
In order, and you're not taking it down, right?
No, no, sir.
In order to put a porch, it would have to be in the front yard, because you're dealing with a structure that's already non-conforming, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Mr. Scalise, can you speak to the distance between the lot line and the curb line? It looks to me to be significant, almost.
It is. It's funny you say that, and you hit the nail on the head. It's exactly ten feet. I guess there's a right-of-way, or, you know, maybe, I don't know, they could put sidewalks on this property at some point. What's that?
They could.
Yeah, so that's very astute. It is about ten feet off of the curb line.
Okay, thanks.
Do you have a little bit of an extra buffer? I have a rendering also, if I could put into exhibit, which I guess would be A four. Mr. Irene?
That's correct.
The only thing I apologize, there's a tree and the driveway is not depicted accurately. But what is depicted accurately is our intention as far as the front porch here, as you can see.
I was gonna ask that question. I have seen, I'm familiar with the property. Are those two trees gonna remain on property?
The tree on the right, Mr. Bunge, I don't know if you want to chime in, but the tree on the right is still there. I believe the tree on the left is not there anymore. Yeah, correct. The one on the left is not there. We love the character of the tree. That one is absolutely staying. On the right, sorry.
So, Mr. Scalise, if I understand the proposal, you know, the idea is, you know, the front porch is really gonna help make this aside, and that the variance should be granted, because the end result is gonna give an appearance that's consistent with the neighborhood. The problem that I have, could you show us your front elevation? Now, can you show us the Buena Vista side, please? Why no care to that? I'll cut right to it. It's a corner property, and you're facing one of the prettiest roads in Fairhaven, and it looks an awful lot like a side. I live on a corner, and I have a second front. It's not fully, because I have garage doors. But it's super important when we're trying to make these homes really stand out, I think, to make sure that we give as much care to that second front. And I recognize the interest in the porch for the true front, but I was disappointed when I saw the side. And I'm wondering what can be done to make that as nice as your front, your front front.
Especially since you have excess, I think you have excess room in the setback there, don't you?
You've got an extra ten feet. By the way, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about full construction and adding things to the house, that's not our role. But you're using shake in the front, you're using clapboard on the side. You've got, look at the decorative elements you have in the front, and your gables, you've got board and batten. You've got, you know, individual returns, you've got all sorts of stuff, but there's literally none of it on the side.
Yeah, it's a fair question. You know, honestly, I didn't. Do you want me to, so what we've decided on this is, actually, it's gonna be, the siding will be clapboard with the side also being clapboard, and then in the gables, it's gonna be shake with a nice cedar roof on it, too.
Well, what I'm talking about is, to the extent that you're asking for a variance so that you can make the front nicer, I think that it would be appropriate to do something similar to the Buena Vista side to make it nicer. I'm not trying to add significant dollars to your budget. What I'm saying is, be as creative as you've been on the front to make that second front, that side, you know, similarly attractive. I'm not, again, I'm not asking you to put on a ten thousand dollar porch. But I'm asking whether or not you can add some decoration to make it pop.
You can just. No, no, I can. Just give me, if you could, just give me two seconds.
Any other board members have a similar reaction when they look at the plans?
Another question here, Mr. Chairman. Is there any demolition or construction already going on on the site?
Yes, there is already construction approved. There was a permit approved minus the front porch, yes.
Because I go by here all the time, extensive work is already underway.
Which was approved, yes, under a separate, like a partial zoning permit, if you will, minus the front porch, and there was construction permits issued.
Talking about something that wasn't included, or there was a change, or?
No, so the front porch here, this front porch is encroaching on the setback. It's exacerbating your front yard setback, so.
John, they wanted to start building what was allowed.
Right.
And not have to hold the whole project up waiting for the porch to come to the board. That's, is that right, Mr. Scalise?
Well said.
Can I answer your question, Joe? So the dwelling expansion in and of itself conformed, apparently, and they got permits for that. Apparently, they also were gonna show the porch, but that would require a variance. So they went to proceed with the dwelling expansion that was permitted, and that then coming to the board for relief for the porch, if they didn't get it, they'd lose the porch. That's all, they couldn't build it.
John, you should assume that everything that's being done is otherwise fully conforming and permitted. They showed a plan that didn't have the front porch and pulled their permits. It's becoming more and more common. Now, if the argument is, I need the porch, otherwise it's not gonna work, then you got a problem, but that's not the argument. The argument is it's gonna look nicer with the porch, don't you agree?
So our question of can you build a compliant house, we just don't ask anymore?
No, no, because of course they can. We know they can. What they're saying is, on balance, given that I'm working around an existing structure, do you think that this house looks better with a porch? And is it a better zoning alternative to consider putting a porch on this house, notwithstanding the deviation from the front yard setback?
Right, but more and more frequently, we get these applications as an afterthought, where sometimes the construction's even already done. And pieces that would normally go into our consideration of whatever the variance is, it's requested, you know, are off the table, like that whole second front of the house that you have some concerns about, and I do, too.
And those are valid concerns. For instance, if the applicant had built the house up to the front yard setback and then came in for the porch and said, well, it's a hardship, because I can't build a porch without encroaching. In this case, though, as I understand it, the front yard setback is an existing condition. Is that right, Mr. Scalise?
Yeah.
Because it's deficient.
Correct. I was trying to get ahold of my client, but I don't know, he didn't see my, his text. Hold on, I'll try to make this quick, I apologize. I think there's a possibility that we could do a wraparound porch. So kind of like, because it's a corner property, I could do the same porch on the front, wrap it around, and stop it at a certain point, and then I could add an element, but, you know.
So, so hold on. We're not, we're not, that plan isn't even before us. It's just pretty much, we're just talking about the front porch.
Yeah, but let me just, let me just clarify. So I would welcome, all right, a proposal to wrap around a porch and make a true second front. I would certainly welcome that, but we're not gonna do that on the fly. That's not what I was talking about. Look at your front, if you look at your front elevation, you've added aesthetic stone along the foundation. When you go to the side facing Buena Vista, that one of the nicest roads in Fairhaven, you're showing no decorative element to the foundation. If you look in the eaves above the garage, you've got board and batten. When you look to the front that faces Buena Vista, you've got nothing. You've got clapboard siding. I can't, there's not enough texture there. I can't tell what the dimension is with regard to the eaves. But it's very, very clear that this house would go fine as an interior lot. It's not an interior lot, it has two faces. So all I was asking, Mr. Scalise, is whether or not things can be done to decorate this face that projects to Buena Vista to make it look good, all the effort that you made facing the main front of that.
Sure answer is yes.
Okay, it sounded like the homeowner's testimony a little bit earlier was, though, that there was gonna be clapboard in the front as well. But. So maybe I'm a little confused.
Now, I can try to help clarify. So the house always faced on Hillside Place, that's why we never thought about the other side. Mr. Chairman, you bring up a good point. The client, I think, during the initial construction finalized the materials he wants to use, which I was very happy to hear, he wants to do a cedar roof, which I think is gonna look dynamite in a house like this. And he decided to go with horizontal clapboard. So the materials will be unified across. Any treatments that are done on the front, I think he would mimic on the sides. And, you know, again, I understand your concern, Mr. Chairman. Again, the house was always facing the one direction. I didn't think about the corner. There's heavy trees there, so I don't know if you would ever see it like that, but I'm not, you know, debating you in any way. I just always thought of it, if you see in the images, the house faces, you know, Hillside. But I think we'll take your consideration, and I think we can make it look good.
I just want to tie it together. I mean, it's not appropriate for us to design your house. And it's perfectly fine to do clapboard or cedar shake or whatever. But when you treat different sides of the house differently, and at the same time ask for a variance in order to make one side look better, then you care. It's clear you care. This is a really interesting design, and it's a renovation, which, you know, if you've been here for three hours, you know we like. I'm just suggesting that equal treatment to that second front, you know, is all I'm asking, and it sounds like you agree. Um, I I'm just suggesting that equal treatment to that second front, you know, is all I'm asking. And it sounds like you agree that that would be um good upgrades.
Absolutely. And and I, yeah, and I think the 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 drawings that you see now are a little bit misrepresentative because we're kind of showing shake and then clapboard on the side. So I know where you're going with this and and yes, we hear you loud and clear.
Do you have any information about your neighboring properties and how this front porch um will compare to the immediately um surrounding neighborhood? Do we have a, does anyone have a Google view? Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
I got it. Yep. So this is our subject property here. I mean, it's a little bit hard to see, but I mean, I can, I kind of feel like it kind of follows the character. I think some of the other houses are further back. Uh, I think our um, our setback is probably the closest out of some of the adjoining properties here. But if you just look down this road, I kind of feel like it's the same vibe, except unfortunately, our, the hardship for us here is that our house is kind of pushed forward. So if you, you know, which uh if you look at the, give me one second. So you see here, this is the setbacks. And unfortunately, it seems like our project was pushed forward. So just again, looking at you know, what you're saying here, I mean, it's kind of in character. I I would argue it's in character to a lot of what's going on here. You can see here, there's another kind of small gable on the property downhill side. Um, so I would argue it follows the character. I just think our hardship again is the the lot depth is a little smaller and our house is kind of pushed forward and the fact that it's a corner property just kind of gives us um, you know, a little bit, it's a challenge. Uh, but I do not see this negatively affecting any of the property owners. I think it only enhances and follows the criteria that you guys set forth in in the land use law. And I I really think it would be a wonderful addition to the wonderful homes here.
I I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer the question based on what you just showed us. I was asking whether or not any of the other properties in the immediately surrounding neighborhoods have similar projections into the front yard setback. I agree with you that a porch is generally within the character of Fairhaven and certainly this area of Fairhaven. I don't see houses similarly situated with regard to their frontage. This house is projecting further forward. Maybe, maybe it's close to the second one, but almost everything else is further back.
That's correct.
Uh, there's one three uh three down from us. So if you go three down to the left, that's relatively close to, um, I don't know exactly the feet from the street. Uh, one more, Anthony, the brick straight uh drive, yes. That one, if you look on the street view and when you walk past it, it looks closer to the street and that's set forward. Um.
That house conforms. I know that house conforms.
Yeah, 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 definitely conforms. I'm just, yeah, highlighting.
So we we should just indicate.
Why are you so sure about that, Mr. Leader? Because because it just measured roughly 32 feet and we think that there's 10 foot of right of way. How would it conform?
Because it's new. It's the Cruz's house and they built it after getting denied for a variance by this board, Mr. Nishaz, this mean board. And they built a brand new house without variances, so it.
Must have been before I was on the board because I'm not a mean person.
Yeah, right. It conforms.
So we're going to mark the Google aerial and everything that you've demonstrated with it as A dash five. I assume that can't be submitted, so we're just going to make it as part of the recording because we're being recorded. So that's A dash five.
You got it, Mr. Irene. Thank you.
Okay, uh, anything else, Mr. Bungie, that you want to make sure the board hears? Any additional testimony?
Uh, no, no, we're gonna uh, we're excited uh on the approval of the existing property and uh, thank you for your time. I know it's getting long.
Uh, Mr. Scalise, did we hit on all your points?
You did. Thank you so much for your time. Yes.
Any board members have any questions or comments?
I have some questions in my report if I could go over them.
Go to Elena.
Um, so one question is, um, is there any work proposed on the garage that would impact the setback?
No.
No.
Um, I have a comment, which I think you answered about just confirming that the habitable floor area is calculated from exterior wall to exterior wall.
Yes.
Um, does your habitable floor area calculation include the garage or no?
Um. Well, I believe because this is existing, it's not required to.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that um
Yeah.
The floor, if you didn't, you know, include that.
I don't, no, no. I had an issue on another project. When it's a new house, uh, we had to include 50%. And this, we did not have to.
Okay. Um, and then I just have a comment just to, could you just confirm that the second story addition completely complies within the with the setbacks?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, um, are you proposing any landscaping or a tree removal as part of the project?
Mr. Bungie?
We would like to, yeah, do a really nice landscaping job. So that's uh definitely part of the uh, you know, the project. Um, no tree removal.
Okay, I know there's a couple of what look like older trees within the front yard along uh Buena Vista Avenue. I just wanted to make sure that um they, you know, weren't going to be impacted or anything. Um, and then are you um proposing any changes to the utility connections? Do you know if the utility connections are currently underground or if they're overhead?
Uh, we talked to our contractor. We're not sure uh what is possible yet.
Okay. Because I know that the um, for I think new new development, it's required to be installed underground. Um, it kind of helps out too and you know, severe weather events as well, that it's underground rather than overhead.
Uh, we would prefer that too. So um, we hear you.
Okay. And that would be all of my comments in my report. Thank you.
I I gotta point out.
I just, it was something different, Mr. Leader. If you want to continue with that same thing and questioning, go ahead.
Well, what I wanted to say is that we don't have any of those details. Clearly require that the utilities go underground if we knew for a fact what was going on. We would clearly talk about adding some sort of recharge uh for the roof leaders uh if we knew more about what was going on, but we don't have any of that stuff. So I I'm hesitant. Um, I I don't know how to ask somebody to do something in relation to a project that we know nothing about.
Yeah, I just have a question about the width of the um porch. Um, it's it's four feet deep, so it's not something that you're going to be sitting on with a with a rocking chair or anything like that. Um, did you consider at all like a six foot wide porch in front of the door there instead of coming into the front yard setback for a full 21 foot width? Is there any practical consideration for that or is that purely aesthetic?
Sorry, say that again.
So you, you're requesting a variance for front yard setback for a 21 foot wide front porch. It's only four feet deep. So it's it's not a practical sitting porch. You're not going to be out there on a on a rocking chair. Um, because you're coming into the front yard setback, was there any consideration of just doing like the six or seven feet between those two pillars on either side of the door and not coming out into the setback for that additional footed to the right hand side of the house there? Or is there a practical reason for it to be a 21 foot wide setback variance as opposed to a six foot wide setback variant?
Oh, now I understand what you're asking. Uh, I think it was just the aesthetics of it, having, you know, the uh a little bit of a wider porch and we were trying to stay the minimum because we knew we were already encroaching. So I didn't want to advise the client to come out further from that perspective. And then on the length, I think we just liked the way the the, you know, having the three columns with the uh the gable on the face of it. So that was just kind of our design strategy. If I, also, if I could just quickly point out, we are under lock coverage. Uh, our impervious coverage is 33%. We're 44% of 40% is required. And uh, building coverage is 35%. We're at 22. So we're well under the percentages. Again, that's not part of this application, but you kind of asked the question. I thought it would be helpful to give you that information.
Before, and if we see to grant relief, we need a, let's get an accurate number on the setback that's being requested. Because I know we threw in throughout 16 inches for the step and and 24 six as opposed to 25 feet from the house. So so I think that's important that we get that accurately.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else? Okay, uh, we're going to go to the public. Any members of the uh public still awake? Uh, have any questions or comments with regard to the application? If so, I'd ask you to use the raise your hand feature, which I know how to monitor. And we will pull you forward. I'm seeing a couple of just go.
Nobody there.
Nobody there.
Well, they're there, but nobody raising their.
We don't know for sure. Okay. All right. So we're coming back, closing public. Um, okay, Mr. Bungie, anything further that we haven't talked about yet? Anything in closing?
Uh, nope, that's it. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. All right, board deliberation.
I I I think it's a modest uh request of a um exacerbation. It's a, I mean, personally, I would have gone for bigger porch, but uh it is what what is requested. I I think it does make a difference and it's highly desirable in the area. Um, I I know we're coming into the front yard setback. I think the additional 10 foot of right of way, and I know you can't count on right of way, but it does make a difference here. We don't have a neighbor issue because the house uh to the left, it fronts onto South Woodland. So it's not like you're you're in that person's line of sight. I think we're far enough back. We've got another five feet on the setback on the on the Buena Vista side that it doesn't uh impede the line of sight around the corner. And um, I think it adds quite a bit, quite a bit to the house, actually, and it would be quite a bit of a lesser thing if you without the porch. Um, to my knowledge, there's no uh planned sidewalks and active transportation plan that would immediately cause a bulk issue here or or you know, in the in the bulk to the front. I I think it's a, it's a modest request.
Think the uh cosmetic appearance of the porch outweighs the additional encroachment, especially when you consider the uh additional 10 foot buffer. So I agree with Mr. Nishazny.
Um, I would also agree. And I would also like to point out that I am pleased, very pleased, because I am also very familiar with this house because I walk my dog past it every day. I live a little further down on Buena Vista. And when this house went up for sale, I was very concerned that it was going to be a tear down. And I am very pleased that Mr. Bungie and his family have taken upon themselves to renovate this house uh in a manner that keeps it with the character of River Oaks. There's not many capes left in River Oaks. Uh, I'm in one of them. Uh, they're disappearing daily, it seems. So I really uh uh, you know, I really commend them for investing in the house and investing in the character of the neighborhood where probably would have been easier to uh build new. So um, I think it's great and it satisfies one of those, uh, you know, one of the things that we're always striving for. So um um, you know, I wish them the best of luck and I I I think the porch is a great addition and should be allowed even, you know, allowed into uh the plan.
Mr. Consal, I recognize that there's, I recognize there's a decent amount of uh established vegetation uh facing Buena Vista. But am I overreaching to want to see uh a nicer face to Buena Vista?
Um. I know, I don't think you are, and I think that's an excellent point. Um, you know, the 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 best, you know, as you point, and I'm I'm happy to hear that you think Buena Vista is one of the nicer streets in town. Uh, that makes me very happy. Um.
Well, not your house.
Well, you know. Renovation and you know, that was one of the things that we wanted to do was keep the character of the cape and uh it 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 looks very similar in plan. Um, so you know, I'm pleased about that, but yes, anything to improve that side on Buena Vista because there are um you know, there, there is vegetation there, but when they um, you know, when they do, when they do this renovation, it's going to become, that side of the house is going to become more noticeable and everything we can do to improve it uh I think is going to help us out in the long run.
Mr. Mr. Irene begs that you confirm that you're outside of 200 feet.
I'm way outside of 200 feet. I am seven houses down and they're 50 foot lots and there's a street in between us, so it's probably 400 feet.
Thank you very much.
I will take the tape measure out tomorrow, Mike.
Not necessary. Thank you.
Anybody else want to jump in?
I I agree with what's been said so far. I think this is a great plan to your, to your point, Mr. Leader. I think um you know, it's more noticeable because the front looks so good. Uh, and I think if it were kind of clapboard all around, we wouldn't notice, but it's a good point. Um, that's that. I mean, I don't have as much of an issue with it. Um, I think it looks good.
Well, look, what I would propose to do um in a resolution would be to obligate uh Mr. Bungie's family to uh treat the Buena Vista side uh in a similar fashion as the, is it hillside or whatever it is side? Um, that that gives him full latitude. I wouldn't suggest he'd have to come back or anything more. I don't want to be overbearing. Uh, I sense that he wants to do the right thing and maybe thinks a little bit differently about it tonight after he's heard the comments. So I'm comfortable with that. Um, I would also probably condition a resolution um on not disturbing the um the significant trees that remain uh in those two front yard areas. Um, I think that those should be preserved and and one of the things that that happens during construction is that your um your yard is is absolutely crushed by all the trucks and all the vehicles. You need to really protect those trees. Um, it's super important and you may mean well, but if you don't put um, you know, the uh the barriers around, the contractors do not care. Uh, two, three years later, they'll be dead and you you'll know then why, um, because the root systems weren't protected. So I I do encourage you to do that. And I would encourage us to include in the resolution that that be done. Anything more? Should I just make that motion? All right. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the Bungie application. Um, and the uh, the approval be conditioned um on the testimony and condition of the plans. Mr. Irene, the front yard setback deviates by a tenth of an inch um to the left and the right. Do you have those numbers correct for the porch itself?
I I have the proposed front yard setback for the porch of 20.5 feet and the step to encroach 16 inches further. Um, and I was an English major, so I don't know if Mr. Scalise wants to give me the proposed for the step converting to 16 inches on top of the 20.5 feet.
Now, don't do it that way. Just so it's a 20.5 and a 20.6 from the two sides, I think. Right, Elena? Is that right?
Yes, 20.5 on one corner, 20.6 on the other corner.
And then just, and then just give him permission, further permission to exacerbate that by 16 inches for the single step between the porch and the street.
Thank you.
Um, I would condition the um, the the motion uh would be to prove the application conditioned on uh a similar treatment of the Buena Vista uh frontage uh to the hillside frontage. Uh, meaning specifically uh siding, gables, foundation treatment. Um, any decorative elements around the windows that are being used significantly in other places, just some general stuff, no specific requirements other than it be treated similarly um to the um uh to the discretion of the homeowner. Uh, and then the last thing would be to condition um the approval on the preservation um of the significant shade trees that are in the two front yards um that remain today that they've been protected during construction so that they can survive.
Second, and and also the zoning schedule confirmed the habitable floor, habitable floor ratio. Just plug in those numbers and
Yes.
demonstrate that they confirm uh conform and comply with the any recommendations requirements in the HSA review letter.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds fine. I had a second for Mr. Nishazny. I had a second for Mr. Nuchesny.
Okay, Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
And Mr. Leader?
Yes. Thank you for a nice project, good luck.
I appreciate it, thank you, everyone.
Um, alright, Peter, we have a couple of administrative things, can we get through them?
Let's get it through quickly. Um, first thing up is the resolution, the Feminello resolution to Holly Lane. Uh, I have reviewed the resolution, I found no deviation from what Mr. Irene put forth, so therefore I'll make a motion to approve the Feminello resolution.
Second.
Could I ask you, um, any very second, it's good. Just curious if there's any feedback on, uh, whether there was an issue with the buffer or not from the, uh, engineers?
I haven't heard anything about the last meeting?
Yeah, with the, the repairing buffer on Feminello on Holly Lane, I don't think we've heard anything about, but I don't think it has any bearing on the resolution, Mr. Shirey.
Uh, Mr. Ridgway is criticizing your microphone, Mr. Nuchesny, which is rich.
You're kidding.
I can't hear you, what? No, you, John, you're, you're coming in and out, I don't know why. Um, we've been, we've been able to make out what you've said, but it's difficult, and Peter, you're too far from your microphone.
Oh, sorry about that.
Don't work on that, Todd.
You guys are doing. Okay. Roll call, I think, from that, I think we got a second.
Alright, uh, Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Keef Resolution, Twenty-Five Beechwood Place. I have reviewed the resolution, I find no variations, uh, I will make a motion to approve the resolution for Keef.
I'll second, Brian.
Thank you. Alright, uh, Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
We done?
No, you, you still have to go.
I think you were recused, weren't you, for that one?
Oh, you were.
Just right, that's right.
How about that?
Zimmer resolution. I'll make a motion to approve the Zimmer resolution as submitted.
For a second, did I miss it?
I'll second Sandy, Ryan again.
Thank you. Alright, uh, Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
And Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
And Mr. Shirey.
Mr. Shirey vote yes on that?
He did.
Okay.
Yes. Good.
Yeah, it's on.
That's what I have.
That's.
That's a couple of ones, okay.
Um, finally, minutes from the April eighth meeting, I submitted some adjustments to Sandy, does anybody else have any adjustments? Well, then I will make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
And Ryan, why not?
Alright. Okay, Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
He said yes, I have a lip reader here.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
And Mr. Leader?
Yes, I, I have been remiss in opening to the public for public comment, I do see that we have four diehards left. Anybody have any comment for the board, general business? If so, raise your hand, please. Seeing none, I, I just wanna close tonight by complimenting this board, solvent application was extremely difficult. Um, everybody was extremely patient, um, that was very, very, very challenging. Um, we don't vote with our heart, we vote based on what we're supposed to do, and everybody, I think, did a super good job really digging into that and struggling with it. Um, the end result is obviously very positive, but, um, nobody, uh, jumped on that easy, nobody reacted too quickly, everybody really thought it through. Um, I'm so proud of this board, I, I just recently told, I was out last night, went to a restaurant, first time in a year plus, man, was it fun. I challenged somebody at the table to find me a better zoning board in the entire state of New Jersey. Um, you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Stay safe, two weeks.
Everyone, be well.
Alright, buddy, thank you, Sandy, thank you, Joe.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
Bye, everybody, be well.
Good night, Sandy.
Good night.